Okay. Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the Second Malibu Planning Commission Regular Meeting for March 18th, 2019. Kathleen, could you give us a roll call and let's see who's here?
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Marks.
Here.
Commissioner Mazza. Chair Euring.
Here.
You have a quorum with Vice Chair Jennings absent.
Okay. Commissioner Hill, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you very much. Could we get an approval of the agenda?
I move the agenda as recommended by staff with Item 4A and 4B continued to April 1st.
A second? Good, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Kathleen, posting of the agenda, please.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on March 8th, 2019, with the amended agenda posted on March 12th, 2019, and the second amended agenda posted on March 15th, 2019.
Thank you very, very much. Good job. Okay, we're going to start with a staff update on the Wusli Fire rebuild. I believe, Richard, that's you.
Good evening, Chair Euring and members of the Commission. I'd like to go over some numbers for you to let you know where we are with the fire rebuild. We've issued to date nineteen permits to allow folks to enter into the building department's plan check phase to look at how they could hook up a temporary structure on their property. And so, we've issued nineteen. I don't, at this moment in time, have a number for what the Building and Safety Department has approved because what some of the constraints are getting the site cleared and the Phase One done and making certain that all the hazardous materials have been removed. We've taken in fifty-two planning verification applications, fifty of which we've approved, and nine of those planning verification applications are now going through the plan check process with the Building Safety Division. To date, two of the eight administrative plan reviews have been approved, and one of them is currently within the plan check process. That's for replacement and addition, and we'll be watching the progress, see how long that takes. When we were here last time, we mentioned that there was going to be an amendment to the local coastal program adding de minimis waivers and changing some code language about the removal and treatment, I should say, of native trees. All of those code updates were certified at the meeting last week by the Coastal Commission and will be going into effect. Once again, this is just some refresher information for folks that there is a debris removal operations center that's in Calabasas. If they need any help or questions answered with the site cleanup process, it's open Monday through Saturday. Monday through Friday are full days, and Saturdays are half-days. And once again, to reiterate that on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we have a member of the LA County Fire Department at the public counter. They're actually right next door in a small room there. We call it the Carbon Room. But if someone comes to City Hall Tuesday and Thursday mornings from 8:00 until 12:30, there is somebody here from the Fire Department they can sign up and speak with. We have an upcoming workshop that's going to be provided by the City of Malibu for both residents as well as professionals in the field of design, construction, or engineers. We're going to be holding the first of these workshops on March 28th. That'll be one that's on a Thursday between 2:00 and 3:30 p.m. is going to be a presentation. We'll have counter-hours afterwards with all the different agencies in the city so that questions can be answered. We felt that the presentation that'll take place during the business hours while it is open to anybody, our target audience there is folks who are in the building industry, architects, and folks that will be helping others. We'll be holding the second meeting on Sunday, the 31st, and with the same hours, 2:00 p.m. will be the start date of this, and we'll have open counter-hours afterwards till 5:30. In that meeting, since it's on a weekend, we were trying to do it outside a normal work hour so that it's easily available to any of the residents so that they can come as well. But once again, both meetings are open to anybody, just one during the workday and one outside those hours.
I'm just going to add to that that our intention is to have all of the city department reviewing departments available for counter-hours. They'll also be giving brief updates. Our goal is to have the presentation part be mainly focused on updates and information that is new and like the latest that can help people not, you know, kind of go over all the past history and everything, but just more tips about how to move forward. And then, the counter-hours will be fully staffed by city staff as well as Fire Department and Water District. That's a sure thing on Thursday, and we're trying to get that locked down for Sunday as well.
And once again, some more community programs we've been mentioning in the past, but on the 9th, there'll be a rebuilding resilience program, and then on the 22nd, there's also a mindful meditation. And then, once again, we've been showing you this slide for the last couple of meetings, but the purpose of it is for anyone, these are areas where things can be found related to the fire. So, for example, we have debris update materials on the clearance and questions too on tax relief and mental health questions that LA County has information on their website, LA County Recovers. And as always, we have been updating forms and our FAQ sheet on the city's website, which is malibu city.org/rebuild. And also, we recommend that if anybody is interested in getting updates whenever new forms come out or changes, we have been using the city's alert, emergency alert system for that, and if they register with the city at malibu city.org/alerts, they could be put on those lists to get any updates when we change forms or add new materials. I'm available for any questions if there are any.
Questions, commissioners?
Richard, I think debris removal for people who opted out was supposed to be... Deadline was last Friday, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So, how do we stand on debris removal?
My understanding from the last discussion with our Building Safety Department, and we can bring you accurate numbers, but just roughly, I believe it was over two-thirds that they had reconciled. I think we still have a few outstanding, and they are encouraged still to go to that debris removal center, but I can bring you, if you like, in the next meeting, we could bring exact numbers.
Anybody else? Yeah? Richard, thank you very much. Again, basically, what hearing going on in the community is you guys are doing a hell of a job, so I appreciate it very much, and I think the people out there will do so also. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to item oral and written communication with the public. Do we have any speaker slips? Kathleen, please. Vida?
Your honor.
Good evening. I just wanted to address some concerns that I have regarding the upcoming changes to the planning code here in the City of Malibu, and there's two points in particular that I'd like to make. I think it's a very good idea to further limit the size of homes that can be built and look very closely at what effect they will have on the neighborhoods where these are being proposed. And I feel that limiting the size, as what I've heard, in terms of 8,500 being the maximum size that's allowable, may not be going far enough in some of the neighborhoods. I think we need to go to overlay districts, specifically, as we've done in La Costa, for instance. Something similar to that should apply in Point Doom and in Malibu Park because the formula that's being tossed around with a maximum size of 8,500 square feet will allow some houses to be built in those neighborhoods that are simply too big for the lots. If we're going to maintain that rural character of what was the classic ranch-style homes originally built there, which I think is something very valuable that we do want to maintain, we can't go to a simple formula to cover that whole area that also adequately addresses the rest of development along these twenty-plus miles of coast. If we limit the houses in these tracts where they're very close together to a greater degree and then allow larger homes to be built in the canyons away from public motorways, away from public trails, and in concert with the surrounding topography there, I feel we don't want to limit as much as we do, for instance, now with these rebuilds that are going to be coming up. Some people will be going for new CDPs to rebuild in those areas, and I fear that the new houses that come in will have the same effect that we saw after the '93 fire in La Costa. Today, we have an overlay district there, but somehow, something I think went horribly wrong following that firestorm, and those houses that were rebuilt are too big for the lot. It's that Santa Monica effect where the neighborhood is just ruined for everybody, and to stand on La Costa Beach and look into La Costa, you realize all those houses were allowed under the rules of the day, but they were just too big. And I think the same thing's going to happen on Point Doom now, and the same thing's going to happen in Malibu Park. Those areas need to be further restricted, as do other areas. We need overlay districts, not one formula, but then we need to make concessions for those forty-acre pieces that nobody can see these houses if they're built properly. Another concern I have is we're always talking about the total development square footage, and we don't really take into account that this is a rural area and people have equestrian facilities, barns, chicken coops, and other things. Those are not habitable space. Of course, we all are worried about chicken coops with a hot tub showing up on Airbnb, but the idea of needing a guest house and a pool house and a main house is something very different than allowing for a writer's quiet room or a home arts studio or recording studio in the backyard. Those things need to be treated differently. That's part of the Malibu that I'm familiar with, that I grew up with, and I worry that by saying it's 8,500 square feet, no matter what it is, it's going to wipe out some of those unique uses that we have here in the city. I don't want that part of the city to change.
You got thirty seconds. Sorry. Not cutting you off, but...
Okay, thank you very much. And you and I talked a little bit about that when we did the site visit this week, and hopefully, look, there's going to be a lot of discussion, I think, before we get to the final resolution of what this ordinance is going to be, and I think your comments are right on the spot, so thank you very, very much.
Chair Euring, the clock appears to be malfunctioning, so today, we'll be giving warnings.
Oh, there's no... The clock's...
Still has three minutes left.
Okay, good. Bonnie's going to be the time he... Kathleen be the time he...
You'll give a warning at one minute and thirty seconds left?
Okay. So much for technology. All right. Planning Commission comments?
Yeah, I have precisely four. First, thanks to everybody who took up the plastic sandbag issue. I know Reva was in the lead. I had made some comments about that a few weeks ago, and I'm glad that they have now addressed that. Secondly, when we get from staff... Hello, staff over there. When we get tables of square footage, whether it's habitable or TDSF, it would be good if we could get the mean calculation on that too, in some standardized form, whether that's tossing out the highest and the lowest or whatever the greed upon mean is. That way, we each don't have to, on our own, kind of go through and try to figure out, what is the mean here, and maybe come up with different numbers. It seems like we get a bunch of numbers. It would be nice to just get the mean.
Well, the reason we don't do that is because we don't have a standard, and so, the commissioners have expressed interest in having the numbers before, but in the absence of a standard, I have not asked the staff to calculate anything.
Okay, I guess my thought would be is if we get that table, however ad hoc it might be, if we could get the number calculated, what that mean is in some way that we can acknowledge, okay, this isn't a binding standard of any sort, but that it's... We don't each have to go through that mental math and maybe risk coming up with different numbers.
I just... I don't feel like it's appropriate, since we don't have a standard, for me to arbitrarily pick how to do it and then tell you that's how it's done. That's my con...
Okay.
I understand your conundrum, but we're hoping to solve that as we move closer to this order.
And that may well sort out, as in the ordinance, we might not have the same issue going forward. Okay. Number three, in all the talk of emergency preparedness and everything we're going through, occasionally, I hear, "Well, you know, we need to be prepared for other things like earthquakes, and there are other things we should be doing at the same time." One thing I have not heard is any discussion of cyber conflict and what unique characteristics that might bring in the form of an emergency. Last week, some of us, myself included, experienced an outage of Gmail for almost a full day, and other people had problems with Facebook and Instagram, and at the precise moment that Trump was meeting with Kim, we later learned that North Koreans were doing a demonstration of their cyber prowess by showing the NSA how they were inside the infrastructure of a number of companies and government organizations in the U.S., poking around in the computers. We've probably heard a lot about these things, and one thing that might be different about... Well, we know if something along the lines of utilities being shut down came along, that might be similar to dealing with an earthquake and how we'd be prepared for the emergency, but one thing we haven't talked about is what happens to all the stuff in the cloud, your bank records, your health records, all the kinds of things that you have come to depend on being sort of invisibly there for you, could theoretically be compromised if there were any sort of computer troubles. So, just kind of a word to the wise, this is something else we should be thinking about in the emergency preparedness panoply, and those of you at home might want to make sure you have hard copy backups of certain kind of documents that, you know, you want to be able to keep track of your money. It's not all ephemeral. And then, finally, I just wanted to say a word of condolence for New Zealand and the Muslims. I think that should be called out publicly. Thank you.
Chair Hill? Or Commissioner Hill? Commissioner Marks?
I don't have anything for today.
John?
Yes. First, I want to ask when, as Vida said, the mansionization comes to us. I know the City Council wanted it back in April, so I assume it's fairly soon.
I expect that we'll have it back to you in May.
Okay. Now, also, I've been asked several times about what SCE is doing as far as whacking trees, and I wondered, do we have any requirement if there are native trees that are in this zone they're supposedly clearing out? Do they have to get a CDP or any approval from the city?
We're looking into that now. I've asked them for details on what work they're doing and what kinds of trees they're affecting so that we can make that determination.
Okay, the other thing I'd like to do is we... I don't know if we've ever done this, but I'd like to dedicate the meeting to Joan Zambetti, who died yesterday, and she's a longtime Malibu local. I'd also, because of our surf heritage, like to add Dick Dale to that, major part of surf culture, so if we have consensus on that, I'd like to do that.
Do we get consensus for that?
Yeah.
All right, very good, John. Thank you. Anything else?
It doesn't.
Okay. I only have one. If you follow these meetings, I've been trying to get information on the stoplight that we have at the corner of Cross Creek and Webb Way, how it got there, who approved it, why it didn't go to the commissions, and it's been an interesting journey. Primarily, over the last week or so, I've been trying to focus on, and again, why did it not go to one of the commissions, Planning Commission or the Public Works Commission? Because, like I've said before, those commissions are the voices of the residents. They are there to help us make sure that as these projects come through, they've at least got somebody who lives in the community, who drives in the community, who pays taxes in the community, taking a look at them and saying, you know, is there a way to make them better? Are they really going to serve what we need here in Malibu? All right, so, I've not been able to get answers, so a couple of weeks ago, I wrote a letter to our city manager and asked her if she could identify who the individual was who decided not to send this to the Public Works Commission. I've not been able to get an answer. So, what I recommend, if you're out there and you have a concern with this, maybe you could write an email to the city manager and see if you can get a response, because I've not been able to get one, and that's all I got.
I want to add something to that. And correct me if I'm wrong, Bonnie, on the 26th, we have a meeting at City Hall about the stoplight at the seafood restaurant at Corral Beach, and I wondered how that one was going to be handled as far as public comment, or is it just an informal meeting?
Let me confirm if that is actually moving forward. I'm going to send a message, and then I'll let you know in just a minute. I feel like it might have gotten postponed, but let me make sure before I...
Well, I think it was on for this week, and it was on the city calendar for next week.
Okay, let me confirm that.
Yeah. Okay.
Commissioner Hill?
If I may just follow your comment about the light at Webb Way. Coming here today, the three cars in front of me made rolling California stops as though it were just a stop sign, and we're just pretending that's how it works now, and it doesn't need to be a stoplight.
You've got to love Malibu. Bonnie, one last question. You know, the meetings you're going to have for the developer, for the architects, are they going to be videotaped? Is it going to be on video?
The rebuild workshops?
Yeah.
Yes, they're going to be livestreamed and then available after the fact also.
Excellent. Okay, Bonnie, back to you. Any comments?
No, I don't have anything tonight.
All right. Moving right along. Let's go to the consent calendar. Anybody want to pull anything? Public, anything pulled? Public has pulled Item 3B-2, 3B-2, and 3B-3.
I think that's only if they get pulled that they're available to speak, or they want to speak.
Available for questions? Okay, let's speak. Pull from the consent calendar? Okay, so this is only if anybody here wants to pull them. Commissioners, any consent calendar? 3B-A, 3B...
One.
One, two, and three.
Yeah, and 3A-1.
Anybody?
Vida, there are new items.
No.
Okay.
So, I'd like to pull 3B-2.
3B-2. Anybody else? Okay, 3B-2.
So, then we need a motion for the balance of the consent calendar. I think you pulled 3A-1.
I move you accept the balance as a consent calendar.
Second?
And that's with 3A-1 and 3B-2 pulled, is that correct?
No, 3B-2's the only thing we're pulling right now.
Only 3B-2. So, the motion is to accept staff's recommendations.
We made the motion, but on a second.
Okay. Second?
Okay. All in favor? 3B-2 is winding way.
I'm sorry, I'm not seeing... What else is there? There's Bug B and Bonzel.
Bug B is no... They've already issued the permit that was going, and we've got Bonzel Drive was the other one.
And we're not pulling it.
We're not pulling Bonzel.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay? All right, so 3B...
Do we get a... I think we had a motion, a second.
Can we get a motion? You got a second?
Chris seconded it.
Yeah, I seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. 3B-2, could we get a staff report, please?
Of course. Good evening, Chair Euring, members of the Planning Commission. The request before you is for a two-year time extension for a coastal development permit and other discretionary request for a two-story, single-family residence and associated development. That was previously approved by the Planning Commission on December 7, 2015. An appeal to the City Council was submitted and withdrawn on January 21, 2016. Therefore, the effective date of that CDP was January 21, 2016, and the original approval was for three years, so it was set to expire on January 21, 2019. The applicant submitted timely two-year time extension. Since the effective date of the application, the applicant submitted and was granted a substantial conformance review, which they requested to change the architectural style of the original house from a colonial-style house to a more modern house. The approved plans are still in plan check and are awaiting final plan check approval. Additionally, the applicant provided plan check comments from the Fire Department. Those comments came in an email today and were distributed to the Planning Commission. The email pointed out an issue with fire flow. The original application, at that time, fire flow was acceptable to the Fire Department since then. That has changed, and they were waiting for the Water District to come up with a list of upgrades that would be necessary to bring the fire flow up to the Fire Department's standards, and so, I believe they're still working on that, but the applicant can provide you with a more detailed explanation as to the status of that and where they are, and they can also explain other reasons for the due cost request for the time extension. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Adrian, thank you very much. Back to the table, commissioners.
Adrian, where do they stand as far as permits? Have they... You say they were through plan check review, but have they paid for any... Have they actually entered into the review process and paid for any permits?
Yes, so they're in plan check, so they submitted the plan check fee, and so, they're being reviewed as we speak. They've been in plan check for several months. They can give you the exact dates if that is the question.
Okay, and I was at the original hearing, and this house has an above-ground basement. When they changed the architecture, did they leave the above-ground basement?
There were a lot of changes to the basement. Actually, they reduced the size of that quite significantly to try to meet our code requirements with some of the changes that they were proposing. So, however, there is a portion of the house that was burned up, and I think that's the portion you're referring to that was daylighting. That portion is still part of the project.
Okay. So, that did not change?
The basement size was...
The double walls filled with dirt and all that?
The basement size was significantly reduced, but that portion is still part of the project.
Okay, was that... How much can you change a house and go into plan check from the original? I mean, how do we know that, as I remember at the time, and this is from memory, and we're just considering whether to bring this in for a full hearing, I guess.
Commissioner Mazza, I just want to caution, we should all focus on whether there's due cause to grant the extension. We shouldn't reopen the details of the actual project.
No, but I just learned that the project's been changed, and I'm just trying to find out how much, because if it's been changed, it may need review.
Well, that wouldn't be a determination made here. If it's a substantial conformance issue, that's a decision made by Bonnie that's not subject to review here by the Planning Commission. The only issue here tonight is whether due cause exists for the extension itself.
Okay. I forgot to do disclosures. I apologize. Commissioner Hill?
I met with the applicant onsite with Commissioner Euring. I also requested documentation showing that the increased fire flow requirement was a surprise such that it might constitute an exceptional circumstance for extension. I received the documents that were copied to all commissioners. I also learned this weekend that this parcel, despite having some disturbance and being now technically, biologically not ESHA, is still legally ESHA in being mapped on the LCP map, and I will have a question about that, the underlying history of that. And finally, I had a brief conversation with Trevor about ESHA overlay maps and the implications of those.
Commissioner Mazza?
No disclosures other than I was at the original hearing.
Commissioner Marks?
I have no disclosures.
Okay, and I was with Commissioner Hill when we met with the applicant and their team, got a chance to walk the property, got a perspective of what it looked like, and at least an overview of what they were trying to do, but didn't really learn anything that wasn't in the staff report that raised a lot of questions regarding the timing of some of the permits, what's in, what isn't, when the Fire Department notified them that the fire flow wasn't going to be adequate, just so we understand how that all fits into the process of when the... Whether the extension should be granted. So, with that, let's go back to questions. Have anything else? Are you done, John?
Give me a second. Give it to somebody else.
Commissioner Hill?
I'll take it. Yeah, I have a couple of questions of staff. I'm just a little bit fuzzy about the underlying basis for the removal from ESHA status. My understanding is that originally, it was mapped as ESHA by coastal prior to cityhood. At some point, there was a development permit issued 1990, and then there have been other activities since then. I don't understand, and yet, the official map still says it's ESHA, so I'm wondering how that initial removal from ESHA status occurred, if that was in fact in 1990, or how did that... if that was in fact in 1990, or how did that come about? And is that any source of any kind of underlying stain on the application here?
So there is a lot of history on the property, as you pointed out. So there was an original coastal development permit that was approved by Coastal Commission in 90s. There's also a letter from the Coastal Commission staff indicating that all the grading that was done at that time, as well as retaining walls, deemed the project to be vested. And so they have a vested project. Now, the applicant had a choice to move forward with their vested application. However, that application included a much larger house. It was a three-story house, which would have been in conflict with the city requirements. So the choice would have been to modify the project with a substantial conformance review with the Coastal Commission and submit separately to the city for a local approval, which could have been processed without a coastal development permit. Or the, you know, the option they picked was to actually just process a new CDP with the city. And the reason they did that is basically to save time, because otherwise you'd be having to coordinate with two agencies. So, but with their vested project, it vested the footprint of the house. There was a bioassessment that was prepared for this project. The bioassessment indicated that the few modifications surrounding properties covered most of the property, and the portions of the property that weren't covered by the few modifications did not meet the definition of ESHA. And so it was concluded at that time that even though it was mapped ESHA, that it didn't qualify it as ESHA. Now, there are some provisions in the LIP where if the map identifies something as ESHA, but a site-specific bioassessment indicates that it's not, that they have to, that the project could move forward and still be approved by the Planning Commission, and that the city do a follow-up amendment to the ESHA map. And so that's something that the city's still working on, because obviously we've approved a lot of projects since the LCP, and we have yet to finalize that map amendment. But we have collected all the bioassessments where the map has been adjusted by projects that have been approved by the Planning Commission, and at some point, we'll address the map changes.
Okay, going back to rephrasing my question. I understand all that. I understand that it's not considered ESHA now because of the biological status. It got to that point, though, because it was graded under this vested permit that happened way back when. And it was previously considered ESHA by coastal prior to that. I'm wondering, do we know how it was removed from ESHA status when it needed to have been approximately 1990? Was that a legal removal at that time, or are we building this whole thing on the back of what was then an illegal removal and kind of ignoring that and saying, well, you know, we're just looking at it de novo? Do we know what happened then?
We don't have an answer to what happened. Like I said, the Coastal Commission staff did not indicate in their vested letter that anything had been done illegally. So all they said was all the grading and everything that had been taking place on the property was subject to the preuse approval.
Commissioner Hill, there are provisions in the code that deal with the situation where it has been illegally changed, and that's why the bioassessment is different in that situation. That apparently didn't apply in this case, but I want to be careful that we don't get off track, because we want to lay a record here that the decision here tonight is based solely about whether there's due cause for the extension to be granted. We really can't reopen the merits of this case. If you disagree with the project or the decision made to approve it, we can't reverse the decision based on that. It would have to be based on whether there is due cause for an extension to be granted or not. That's the only basis we can...
Okay, then my next question would be, is it not true, though, that we're looking at this de novo insofar as they have to revise with additional grading for a wider driveway? And there were some steeper slopes that needed some kind of remedial grading or something, and that... I read somewhere that we were looking at the CDP anew at some level, or is that what happened in 2015? I'm a little fuzzy about the timeline.
Correct, correct.
Okay, so that is completely not, okay. I have some concerns about the exceptional circumstances in the fire flow, but I think that may be more for a matter of discussion after we hear more from others. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Because we haven't opened the public hearing yet. You want to hear from the staff first?
Oh, just a real quick one. Part of what determines whether this can be continued is whether it can be completed. And it appears by this letter, October 18, 2018, that they do not meet the fire flows. And then they provide some form of information on fire flow availability that the Water Works signed on. And then the part three says, "Accept the condition of approval by the building department." It can be made if this is not in the high-fire security zone. Now, I assume all of Malibu is in the high-fire security zone. Is that right?
Almost the entire city, yes.
So, and especially up in the mountains. So how could this permit flow through and get approved if it doesn't have the water?
Well, I don't think we can answer that question. They just learned recently that there was an issue with the fire flow. They haven't addressed that issue yet, so they're still working on that right now. We don't know if there is a way to resolve that issue, but a lot of times, they find a way. A lot of times, it's just a matter of, you know, doing upgrades to the system. So again, they need to go through that process with the fire department, figure out what they need to do to determine whether it's feasible or not, but we can't really answer that question.
Public hearing? Commissioner Marx? All right, let's open the public hearing. We have two speakers, Mr. Alan Harden and Neil Willner. You guys can decide which order you'd like to speak in. So we will open the public hearing. Who's gonna go first?
Gentlemen, my name is Neil Willner. I'm one of the managing members of this project. Mr. Mazza, remember me from the original hearing. I'm just here to say hello and let some of my more knowledgeable associates talk and answer these questions. And we have your good friend Norm is gonna...
Is Alan Harden, you gonna speak?
No, Alan's not gonna speak.
I'm gonna let them...
How much time do they have?
Well, how many cards do they turn in?
I've got...
They get three plus one for every person who donates a minute.
Okay, I've got, well, Mr. Willner just spoke, so his time is gone, right?
I defer my time to Norm. Can I do that?
Okay, yeah, we give Norm, we'll give Norm four minutes. How's that?
It's your discretion.
Yeah, four minutes, Norm. Go ahead.
We identify who's donating the time.
And that additional time is coming from Mr. Alan Harden. Additional minute, four minutes, Norm.
And Norm, the clock isn't functioning, so Kathleen will give you a warning at 1:30.
I understand. Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to address some of the concerns. I'll focus, first of all, upon the issue of due cause. If you read Neil Willner's letter, you know that his wife has been extremely ill. And she cannot speak now, and she requires constant attention and help all the time. That took a lot of time away from his efforts to move forward with the development of the property. Second, he mentioned that he spent over $900,000, over and above the acquisition price. He bought it from me, and they made some changes. Doug Burge is the architect on the project. And I think it's a nicer-looking project. The size is roughly exactly the same, a little smaller. So he has used due diligence to move forward with the plans and plan checking. When we talk about plan checking, we're talking about plumbing, we're talking about electrical, we're talking about Title 24, we're talking about structures, roofs. All of those things have all been done, and they have been submitted to California Code Check for review. They've been reviewed, they've come back. I'd like to ask one question of Joseph. Joseph, have they actually approved the construction plans of date?
For the house, we have an approval.
For the house. We have full approval. By the way, those plans are about this big around, and it's a huge step to construction. They also have all the financing set forth to move forward. This fire department approval appears to be the only thing that is preventing us from pulling the permit. For all those people out there trying to rebuild their houses as a result of the fire rebuilds, they know what it's like when the fire department changes its development standards and all of a sudden wants upgrades. In answer to your question, there are several upgrades that can be done. One is an increased pump system to increase the pressure, which will also increase the flow. Right now, it appears as though the fire department will be satisfied with a generator. And that is in the process of being negotiated. And when that gets done and they get the fire department approval, they will be in a position to start construction. So we strongly believe that the project, we've proven our due diligence and therefore due cause for the extension.
You have one minute left.
I'll save the rest of it in case there are planning commissioners that want questions and have not been answered.
We'll ask questions. You can speak for a minute.
Thank you.
There are two other speaker slots for Patrick Reiner and Joseph Lozano. Do you guys want to speak, or?
Yeah.
Patrick, do you have anything else to add?
I mean, the only thing I could add is just on the fire flow and the water pressure, because I know that you had questions specifically on that. I actually got today from Water Works a schematic on a generator. And that is one of the things that they're suggesting, I think, for the entirety of Malibu to help with the water pressure for a lot of these houses, because this isn't just our issue. This is a lot of people's issue. And this backup generator and switch makes it so that a lot of these zones can then tap into the main if power goes down. So that's kind of the general solution, I think, that's being thought with now. And if that is what we have to do and end up having to do that, then we'll do it. But it has been, you know, quite a lengthy process. We learned about it late last year, and we've been, I mean, I've been the one personally doing it with Joseph from Burge, and it's, we've been working hard on it. Obviously, this was even before the fires occurred. So good thing is that this generator does seem like a good solution for all the fire zones. And, you know, I think what ends up happening is we actually have the potential of sharing water for a zone that needs it more than the other. And that kind of increases the amount of pressure that we have. The only other thing I would say, I know you asked, Adrian, this question, but yes, the basement, you know, we also lessened the number of entries to it, so it doesn't connect the way that it did before, and it is smaller. It's substantially smaller. And that was something that we did in working with Adrian to, you know, obtain substantial conformance. But Mr. Mazza, you know, remember specifically the other hearing, and we worked to make it more, you know, along the lines of what you guys want in the city. So between those two things, I guess that's really all I had to say. I really wanted to speak to the water pressure. But we're close, and it has, it's been a lot, but we have been working on it. And I guess the only other thing is just as far as the...
You have one minute remaining?
What was that?
One minute remaining?
As far as the timeline of how everything went, you know, Neil was dealing with his personal issues, and there was, from the approval in 2015, 16, yeah, January 2016, there was a bit of a delay there because of that. And then he partnered up with Mr. Harden about a year later, who, you know, I think is deferring his time to Norm. But at that point, when they partnered up and started working together to get the funding, we have been pretty nonstop since then, working with Adrian, substantial conformance, submitting to Building and Safety or Code Check. We've gone through an entire round with Public Works.
Thirty seconds left?
We have a geology approval, we're working on septic, and so many different aspects. But we are in the second and third phase of everything, and we do have a house stamp. So we're well along our way, and we've been working pretty diligently since that 2000, end of 2016, when Neil could focus on it.
Thank you, Patrick.
Yeah, thanks.
Real quick question before we leave.
Yeah.
The generator, is that the solution everybody's agreed to do, or is that still in the process?
I think it's somewhere in between, still in process and agreed. It's like, the answer that I can get, because they haven't given the official, I spoke to R. Selli too, who works at, where does she work? District 29. She said, as far as she knows, this is the plan, just needs a week to make it official. NEMA over in the office down here sent me schematics. No one's 100% committing to it yet, but everyone is going, this is the idea that seems to make the most sense.
And the timeframe you expect to get a response to is what?
I hear this week, end of this week or early next week, it'll be official.
And you've got the money?
Yeah, we basically...
You're saying that the only thing that's holding this thing up is that?
That, that's, that and the final rounds with Public Works and things like that, which corrections have gone from 15 to 20 to two.
Got you. Thank you very much.
Question?
Yeah.
John?
In Burge's letter dated October 18, talking about the water, he said that David Silverman, your engineer, quote, "There is the potential for the pipes to break if pressure is increased. Replacing the existing pumps with higher-capacity pumps within the existing structure is not an option."
Yeah, and that was an engineer that we hired when, see, this is one of the things with the fire department. We were originally told we actually had to do a backup pump. And housing for the pumps, so essentially build a second pump station down at the bottom of Winding Way. We brought our own engineer in. We had to pay money to have him design it. He went out and met with their engineers for the district, and his concern was that by adding this pump, the pipes would burst. Whether or not it would is not determined. He just voiced that concern. Since then, it's changed to this generator, which would not be adding a second pump. The generator, the way that, what the generator is, is power goes out, an automatic switch hits, the generator goes up, and then neighboring zones can add to our water and vice versa, as opposed to having to add a second pump, which would add pressure and potentially destroy the existing pipes. This, there's no, there's no new pumps or anything like that being added, which is why I'm sure that they had their city employees do the same thing and come across the same fear that it would burst. So the general solution is a backup generator instead.
Now, my second question is, in November...
John, if I can add up briefly, but so does the pressure not go up then with that backup generator?
Again, I'm not like a professional on these type of things, but there is something different with the generator and a pump. Because by adding a second pump, you're pumping extra water at much higher rate. The generator is simply allow, what it is is the max daily demand. And because of you, because of what is existing already, you have to have a certain amount for the area regardless of anything. So with the generator, when the power goes out, it allows you to feed off of others, but all the infrastructure stays the same.
Got it. So it sounds like if you'd added the pump, you would increase pressure, or this just increases duration?
Exactly, and this just increases ability to pull from other areas as opposed to the pump, which adds pressure to Winding Way's pump station.
Okay, and then in November, Joseph Lozano said that you are meeting with Building and Safety to calculate the permit fees and beginning to secure funding for the project. This is three and a half months ago.
Honestly, I think Joseph might have just, there might have been a miscommunication between he and I on that, which I then emailed to you guys, I think, or somehow circulated. We had been, we had been working on funding since Alan...
Oh, I'm not worried about the funding. What I'm just wondering is...
The Building and Safety fees?
You apparently did not enter Building and Safety until after November 8.
No.
Because you were, at the time, asking them to calculate your fees. Adrian, when did they pay their fees?
So, there, there are two fees to be paid with Building Safety. The first one is a plan check fee, which they did pay before that. The second fee is the permit fee. So, the permit fee is something they pay at the very end. So, so that's something that they're trying to-
Hasn't been paid yet?
Not yet, because they, they, they're not ready for that. They do need fire department approval and they need all the other agencies' approvals before the permit can be issued, but they can ask for a quote, so they have the check ready for when they're ready.
Okay. So, what I'm wondering is, I got a little confused here. They did not go through the whole permit process in three and a half months. They didn't do a miracle.
Correct, correct. They, they've been in plan check for longer than that.
Okay. Because this indicates they hadn't been, but they-
I mean, they've been very diligent, but yeah, three months, it's, it's, it's extremely fast.
It's kind of jive, but it should jive, huh?
No, but I, I, I think the point is three months is pretty fast.
That's my point.
Yeah.
Like impossibly fast.
We've been working hard.
Okay. Okay.
I've been here-
Commissioner Hill?
A lot.
I think this is for, for staff in the first instance, question for staff.
Think I've broken all the rules.
We don't, you want to close the public hearing?
No, this is, everybody, I want, probably want to comment from the applicant too, but staff in the first instance, we have a-
Let me do this. I'm going to close the public hearing. You can ask questions if you'd like to do that. All right?
Okay.
You can continue asking your questions, but I'm getting a word to close the public hearing.
Okay.
All right. So, I'm going to close the public hearing and go back to Commissioner Hill.
You may reopen, okay. In August, we have from the fire department, a building plan review that it was not approved and that they were stating, although there was some fuzziness about it, it was, they were stating that they wanted 1375 gallons per minute. And then, we have in the file from October, a, a new fire department building plan review sheet saying 1250. However, that is not signed. It's not, it, it was just a form that Norm filled out for them. And there's no fire department indication on it, approved, not approved, no signatures or anything. So, basically, the last, the official document we have from the fire, fire department, as I understand it, is the 1375 gallons per minute. Is that correct?
I mean, just, so I think we're all clear on that. So, all of that communication was provided to us this afternoon. Planning does not get involved in the fire department process. We allow the plants to go into plan check. It is up to the applicant to get all their necessary approvals so that they're ready for permits. So, they, they, they're probably the, the best person to ask that question.
I can answer it if you want.
Please. Or, do we, how does this work?
No, you can ask him.
Yeah, ask him. Please come up back.
With the permission of the chair, you can ask questions.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. So, the simple answer on that, truthfully, is the fire department doesn't know yet. They have their meetings, and I don't know if you've known, but Jim Bailey from the fire department's been here every Tuesday and Thursday asking or answering question for Woolsey Fire victims and anyone else that has questions. They are having meetings with Waterworks right now to determine the duration. It's back and forth between two hours and one hour. On some of their sheets, it says one hour and verbally they say two hours. So, honestly, it's been a bit confusing as an applicant.
They, they still want the 1375.
It's po, I mean, we've heard rumors that they're willing to go down to 500 for one hour. So-
Well, that's only for fire rebuilds.
Sure, but we've also heard that anything that has to do with fire rebuilds has to do with us. So, we've also heard that that's not true. I, I'm just telling you that it's, we don't have the answers because they don't have the answers yet, which is why we are going after the generator solution, because that is the one where we know we can do it. If they lower the duration to an hour, 1375 for one hour, then we're good entirely and we don't need to do a generator. But that's for their discussions and, you know, I, I think it goes all the way up to the chief, honestly, is what I've been told.
So, okay. So, I get, I have more else to comment on that? It's not a question now, it's just a comment and response? So, I don't know.
I have a question, Bonnie.
Well, can I, just to follow that. So-
Good.
Um-
I know that I didn't fully answer, but I think it's just because there is no answer right now.
Well, so, and as it's, as it speaks to the question of surprise and whether this is an exceptional circumstance warranting the permit, you guys learned in May of 2018 that the Waterworks was now calculating the flows differently with the computer system. So, that was 10 months ago. And so, that doesn't seem like it would be that much of a surprise if it's, and if, if it stays at 1250, that's not a surprise, really. If, if it is that you're up to 1375 now as of August, that does to me feel like more of a surprise and, and an exceptional circumstance. But now, that makes me wonder, if you can't even get the 1250, how are you going to get the 1375 even? Is this, as to, back to John's point, is this a project that's even doable in the end?
You know, it's been almost six months since the Woolsey Fire. And we still don't know what the fire department's willing to accept. Are people diligently trying to find out so that they can build their home? The answer is yes. They're not trying any harder than the owners of this property have been trying for the last six months to figure out what the fire department will accept, what they won't accept, what, quite frankly, they're going to be extorted to put in in order to meet fire flows. But I think the biggest question here is due cause. And we, the, the owners of this property have been diligently pursuing the last, the last element of being able to pull the permits and start construction. And we, we don't know if it's going to be a generator. We don't know how big the generator's going to be. All we know is that there are other homes in the area and they're there and they're not making people evict their houses because the fire flow is not there. So, we're sure that there's going to be a solution. We're just not sure what it is.
So, that they, they had a problem getting you 1250, that Waterworks said they can't get you that, and now suddenly the fire department's asking for 1375. It just seems like that, how does that happen?
Well-
I mean, we, we just don't know, right?
Well, I, I'd like to answer that, because I think what Norm is saying, like, like, let me just give you an example of two weeks in my life during all of this. Is I go to the fire department, I hear one thing, I'm then told to call this person who's on vacation for two weeks. Then this person tells me to call this person who's on vacation for two more weeks. Then I come back and I go down and I meet NEMA, then I have to find him only at counter hours. So, then I meet him and he gives, says, "You need a sheet from the fire department." So, I have to go back to the fire department. I get some, so, I, I'm just trying to explain here that we have been working on it. I promise you, it will work out and we will build this project. I think what Norm is saying is yes, is there due cause. And we have been working steadily on this project since 2015 or the beginning of 2016, except for the personal issues that gave us a bit of a break. Since the end of 2017, when Alan Harden and Neil Willner partnered up, I have been working full throttle on this project. Bonnie can attest to that, Adrian can attest to that, you know, and we have gone back and forth on all these things. We have been thrown curveballs from the fire department. And then, yes, there was a natural disaster that was terrible and has made everything delay by three or four months. And, you know, Public Works has, has wait times now that are three times as long as they used to. So, we're trying to be respectful. I've been here quite a bit, but we do have due cause to extend this. We're so close. We have a building and safety stamp on the house. We have two to three rounds on everything else.
And you've become a water expert.
Pretty, I, I mean, at least, at least in my mind, but whether I am or not, I don't know.
Okay. So, if, so if we gave you the extension, it would still be a, a matter to learn down the line whether you'd actually be able to do the project or not.
No, no.
Because of, because of the water flows. We don't, we don't know that answer yet, right?
No, the answer is, we just got schematics from the Waterworks that say generator. So, as long as we're willing to pay for the generator, we're good.
Commissioner-
Yeah.
Marks? Yeah, just a couple. So, in looking, in looking at-
Yeah, sure.
If, if I may.
If you want to learn how a generator gets your water out of a tank and holds-
We will get back. I'm sorry. I don't mean to be-
We're just trying to keep it moving.
That's fine. The answer is yes, though. We're not, we no longer-
Got you.
Yeah.
I think you've done a good job.
Okay, good.
You've done a good job.
Yeah. So, I'm just, I'm just looking at Policy 5. And what it says here is, you know, the extraordinary circumstances include, and some of those things listed, personal reason, you know, lack of being able to get permits, et cetera. We've talked a lot about, a lot about these things, but when I read what was submitted, all we say is that due diligence has been done. I just want to clarify, what exactly is the team saying is the reason for the extension? You know, just so that it kind of lines up with what the code says. With, with that, I'd also ask, it sounds like for where you are, from what you've shared today, I don't really need two years here. It seems like, hey, if, if, if we want, if you're that close, let's get a year in and, you know, maybe have a, a shift there.
Yeah. I, I think the, the standard has been, and the history in Malibu has been two years, so we just want the standard and history that Malibu has done. It's not that we're going to take that long. It's just, you know, it, it's funny, because on one hand, you say, "Are you ready to build?" And we say, "Yes." And then if we say, "But we want a two-year," you go, "Why?" And I go, "Well, because what if someone throws a curveball?" Oh, ah, but, come on.
And just to be clear, there've been several with six months, a year. This is not unprecedented to say less.
Sorry?
It's not unprecedented to say less than two years.
Yeah. So, you know, do I think we're going to build within six months? Yep. But I don't, we can't commit to that, because I've just experienced two and a half years in Malibu.
Very close to motion here, some. One last question, go ahead.
Bonnie, they talk about lowering the size of the, the quote basement. That automatically changes the size of the building because of the exemption. So, how did we get to substantial conformance?
The changes, I'll let Adrian speak to this in more detail, because it's been a long, it's been longer that I've looked at it than he's probably looked at it. But the, the size of the basement, the substantial conformance policy allows for changes to basement sizes, as long as it's under the footprint of the house and it doesn't change the overall TDSF. And that's basically what happened in this case. There weren't any dramatic changes to the project. It's still substantially in conformance with what was originally approved by the planning commission.
But my question is, they actually made the house smaller? Because they would have to if they made the basement smaller.
The total development square footage actually stayed pretty much the same. So, however, there were a number of areas that were considered to be crawl space, where there were, you know, lowering the height of the ceiling or increasing the, the height of the floor. And so, they eliminated a lot of that. And so, by eliminating a lot of that, it, it made their areas smaller. So, so there was, for example, there was an area like that in the garage. And so, that area was not accounted for in TDSF, but aesthetically, it didn't change anything to make the ceiling height to, to meet, you know, the, the high requirement. But that added TDSF. And so, they had to then subtract that TDSF by reducing the size of the basement. So, and as you know, basements, it's the first 1,000 square feet and every square feet after that is, you know, you subtract, or, you know, you only add half of it. And so, when you add an area on your first floor that doesn't change the aesthetics, you end up losing twice the size of the square footage in the basement.
And the basement was under, over 1,000 feet?
The basement was over 1,000 square feet. And as you remember, as you may remember, there were areas that were first floor and there were areas that were basement and then there were crawl spaces and all these things. So, they simplified it, made it better and cleaner. And that was really the only change from a TDSF perspective. The exterior of the building remained the same with one other change, and that is, they had these rounded areas that they squared off. And so, but square footage wise is all the same. They lowered the height of the roof. They made it from a pitch roof to a flat roof. And, you know, again, they changed the architectural style.
Okay. We've hammered this one, guys. Can we get a motion?
I'll move for a one-year extension.
I'll second that.
Okay. Kathleen, roll call.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Chair Uring?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, we're done.
I know.
My cell phone's on that card.
Okay, we're down to-
We're down to item 5A, coastal development permit number 17074, an application to construct a new one-story, single-family residence and associated development at 6160 Merritt Drive, not within the appealable coastal zone. Could we get a staff report, please? Jessica?
Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is coastal development permit for 6160 Merritt Drive. The project was first approved as an administrative coastal development permit in December of 2013. That ACVP expired in December of 2016. On February 26, 2018, the applicant submitted a new ACVP application with revised landscaping plans to meet the updated landscaping water conservation ordinance. No changes to the architectural civil, civil plans were proposed and no discretionary request was required as part of the application. On October 3, 2018, the ACVP was reported to the planning commission. At that time, the planning commission voted to, for the item to be brought back for a full hearing. The project was scheduled for commission for the November 15 planning commission hearing that was canceled due to the Woolsey Fire. On December 17, 2018, the project was brought back to the planning commission and continued at the applicant's request to allow for time for the planning commission to receive feedback from city council regarding approval of larger-sized homes. During the December 17 hearing, the commission recommended that the applicant remove the proposed palm trees near the residence due to potential fire hazard. The applicant submitted a revised landscaping plan on February 8, removing those palm trees. The property is located on the south side of Merritt Drive in the rural residential five-acre zoning district and is approximately 4.6 acres in size. The property, as you had already stated, is not within the appeal jurisdiction. The project before you tonight consists of an 8,605-square-foot, one-story, single-family residence, including two attached two-car garages, a 900-square-foot second unit, a 612-square-foot poolhouse, and 536-square-foot feet of covered areas that project more than six feet. The project also consists of the installation of a new OWTS swimming pool, spa, water features, 970 cubic yards of nonexempt grading, a 20-foot-wide driveway, landscaping, and hardscaping. The subject parcel consists of a relatively flat pad near Merritt Drive with descending slopes at the rear of the property. The slopes descend to the east and to the southeast with the average steepness of two to one. The proposed development is sited slightly closer to Merritt Drive in order to avoid development on those steep slopes. All proposed development meets the required setbacks. The single-family residence has been designed as a one-story structure, not to exceed 18 feet in height, and includes the two attached two-car garages. Poolhouse and second unit are also proposed as part of the subject application. The poolhouse is designed to not exceed 13 feet 2 inches, and it's shown in the top picture. And the second unit is designed to not exceed 12 feet 7 inches in, in height and is shown in the bottom. Story poles are erected on August 31 of 2018, and these photographs were taken on September 5. They show the story poles as they're visible from Merritt Drive. To date, staff has not received any correspondence regarding the sub, subject application. And in summary, staff recommends the planning commission adopt Resolution 1914 approving the project as condition. And this concludes my presentation. The applicant and staff are available for questions.
Jessica, thank you very much. Any disclosures?
Yes. I visited the site with Commissioner Uring. We looked through the gate at the property, just to get a feel for it. There, there are no story poles up now. I refreshed my recollection as to sequel requirements regarding the need or lack thereof for an initial study. And I confirmed my understanding of that in a brief chat with attorney Rusin. That's it.
No disclosure.
Commissioner Marks?
Uh, no disclosures.
As Commissioner Hill, I've visited the property twice. Once when it became before us, I think in January, December. And again, the story poles weren't there, so I looked through the fence and then we did it again a couple of days ago to take another look. So-
To add to that, we spoke to the neighbor across the street too, and he, he expressed that he was, had no, no issues with it and was, was plenty happy with whatever might happen.
Any questions of staff? No? How about, no?
I've got a lot of questions. I guess, I guess they're for staff.
Ellen Brookman, you are the, do you want to have any presentation? Do you want to have any presentation? Ah.
So you're opening the public hearing?
Going to open the public hearing, he's got what, three minutes?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes. Yeah, just hang on a second, let's just make sure. So what's he got, 15? Give us a second, we'll tell you how much time makes you we do it right.
Okay, well, thank you for your time this evening.
Hang on, hang, figure out how much you got first. This is our, I just want to make sure you get all the time you deserve, so don't, we're not trying to shut you down, we're just trying to do it right.
Continued from before, right? But it was still continued, it's still a continued item.
Is it continued, is it ACVP or CDP?
It's a, it's a CDP, because we already held a public hearing on the item.
Let them figure it out, that's what we got. Hang on, we're working on it. So you're going to have to get a long presentation or you're going to have to talk fast? I'm not sure which one it is yet.
Well, it was noticed as a new public hearing, so I think the saver, this probably could have been noticed as a continued item, but since we noticed as a new public hearing, we'll give him 15 minutes.
You get 15 minutes. You're on.
Great, well, again, thank you, thank you for your time this evening. The project was designed as a retirement home.
You can reserve some time at the end for rebuttal if you'd like to do that, so.
Okay. I don't think it'll be a 15-minute presentation in any case. This is designed as a retirement home for my client. The, the site is constrained on the east and the west by slopes and then the north and the south by the required setbacks. To minimize grading, a lot of the grading goes in into a construction of the fire road, making sure that we maintain the required slopes for the fire department. The house is generally sited on the, the flat area of the lot, as are the accessory structures. The, the site is exposed and windy much of the time. So the house is designed around an atrium so that the clients, my clients can sit out and enjoy the weather without, without hats and other things being blown away. As a result of this, there's a little more circulation in the house. We have to get all the way around that, that atrium, so this, this adds somewhat to the square footage of the house. Public spaces are generally on the west side of the house facing the views. The view from this is due west. Out towards the embayment, there are eucalyptus trees on the lot to the south that obstruct what you can see over, over the land, which was just a small sliver of ocean. There, the house to the north has a series of pine trees planted along their south property line. So the, this construction of this house doesn't affect their views. Bedrooms are located along the south and the east side of the house. The master bedroom overlooks both the swimming pool to the south and the views to the west. There's, you know, the glance, again, this is a retirement home. They have two bedroom suites for visiting children and grandchildren. And then up there on the northeast side is a, is a suite for caretakers if and when they need that. It is a retirement home, and due to the slope of the lot, the garage that's near the kitchen is located down about three feet from the main level of the house, which is, which is one level. So that's convenient for bringing groceries and things in, but as they age, the house is designed for aging in place, we have a secondary garage located on the far side of the house down that long corridor, and that's just upper ramp. The house is designed to be highly articulated, both in plan and elevation, to again, to add architectural interest and minimize the overall, overall scale of the project. The, the average height of the house, it hits 18 feet in a couple of spots, but the average height is only about 14.2 feet. Now, there have been, been some comments at previous hearings about this being a large property for, for the neighborhood. There are 28 properties within the notification area. And in discussions with Jessica and Bonnie, they, they basically consider, or Malibu basically considers the notification, notification area to be the neighborhood. Many of these, however, are currently vacant or zoned institutional, which doesn't allow single-family homes. So if you look at just the occupied houses, there are 15. The subject property is highlighted in red. And I'll point out that the, the square footage figures here are, are per the county assessor, which, which is a conditioned living space. You'll note that 20% of the properties, three, are larger than this house, the largest one being 42% larger in size. So this fits very comfortably within neighborhood standards as far as square footage. Now, if you look at the floor area ratio, it's one of the lowest in the block. There are, again, 20% lower than this. The average floor area ratio is about 6%, and we're at about half that, at 3.45%. So again, in terms of, in terms of floor area ratio, the, the property fits very comfortably within the neighborhood standards. The project complies entirely with all of the, with all of the zoning requirements for the RR5 zone. I don't think there is any reason to, to deny the project. We comply completely, we've gone out of our way to address your concerns regarding palm trees and other items. I'm ready to take questions.
Okay, thank you very much. How much time does he have left?
Nine minutes and 24 seconds.
Okay. Anybody else like to speak on this subject? No, if not, I will close the public hearing, we couldn't ask you questions, but public hearing is closed, back to the table. Commissioners? Questions?
Shall I start down here?
Please.
Okay. The agenda said that, that we continue this, and I say we, I wasn't here then, to allow time for the planning commission to receive feedback from the city council regarding approval of larger, single-family residences. The council has spoken on that matter and has decided that they want substantially smaller houses. But I'm not sure how that, and I guess this is a question for Trevor, how that is applicable here, given that you get the size that you were allowed when the application is deemed complete? So how, how was it that it was continued to look at that question?
First, Christian Hill, I should check, this item did come up previously for hearing. Were you able to review the discussion at the last, that happened at the last hearing?
I was here present in the room observing.
Okay, so you were present, you did hear all the testimony?
Yeah.
Okay, can you repeat your question about why this was continued?
Well, yeah, I mean, it was continued because the commission, basically, in my understanding and recollection, said, geez, this is a really big house, we've got this mansionization concern coming up, the council's going to weigh in on that, let's continue this and hear what the council has to say. And the council has now come back and said, we want much smaller houses. So I'm not sure how, if that was the point of continuing it, how does that jibe with the, what you get when your application is deemed complete?
Part of the reason for the continuance was the difference, the distinction between a project that's requesting and a site plan review where a neighborhood character finding has to be made and projects like this where there is no site plan review or other discretionary requests. In the, in those cases, when appeals have come before the council, they have granted the appeal and proved the projects. And so that, that can be taken as direction for the commission that this type of project where there's no discretionary request, they, they have not made any change to how that type of project gets approached yet.
So it's that, this was, this was continued before self-ridg was decided?
Yeah, I would, I would add that, you know, I think part of the, the reason that the planning commission was interested in that continuance is there was a very similar case, self-ridg, there was a clean sheets project. And in an effort to be consistent in decisions, they wanted to hear what the council had to say.
Okay, so my next question. This is, this is a big house. It, it has eight bathrooms. It's got a lot of grading, a lot of impermeable area. I'm wondering why this is not, and this goes to the city policy generally speaking, why this is not subject to at least an initial study under SEQA review? Because section 15303 makes it very clear that you're allowed without, as an exemption from SEQA review, you're allowed a single-family residence or a guest house. In this case, and I understand how it might be that as a normal practice, we can say, well, you know, we, we let one guest house come in under that, it's, it's, it's part of the, the package and that may even be more appropriate now that we have the ADU or that we will have, we will, we have state law now about ADUs. But when I look at this, I, I see a compound, because that poolhouse to me is, it's described as not living quarters, but it has two bathrooms in it. And that to me, and it's half the size of my own house, it looks to me like you could very easily turn one of those bathrooms into a kitchen. And so I, I see a compound here that, and especially given that 15303 has, in its language, says that it applied, the exemption applies only to small structures. And case law says that SEQA exemptions must be construed narrowly. So the question is, why, why is this not at least subject to the initial review? Especially since there are aspects of it that could be conceivably deserving of an EIR, for example, the amount of grading or the impermeable coverage, that you'd at least want to be able to tick the box and say, yeah, we did the initial review and you're good. Why, why does a three-structure building get to come in without an, with an exemption?
The, the city has historically treated a single-family home as a project that's categorically exempt even with accessory uses. And, you know, it's, it's basically, it's all relative. There, there's another exemption that allows up to, I believe it's four dwelling units in an urban area. So a single-family residence and accessory development that meets all the standards isn't one that would cause any significant impact. Is it a big house? Yes. But it meets all of the other standards, the, the grading is in line with what is allowed for a single-family residence. It's a very big lot, there's no public visual impacts, that's, those are the basic reasons.
I, I see that on paper, but I also see the, the clear language of section 15303, and it just seems like the city, as a matter of practice, is not fully observing that. And, and.
It's just, I don't, I mean, from a practical standpoint, we would be doing initial studies or, or EIRs, as you even mentioned, on every single project, and we, there's just no way to practically do that. And, and in addition to that, the local coastal program is a SEQA equivalency document and requires much more extensive analysis and review than any other, you know, normal zoning code. So a lot of that analysis occurs for our typical, single-family projects that would not occur in, in other jurisdictions. So, you know, this scale of a project in another jurisdiction without an LCP, maybe that, that additional environmental analysis would be warranted. But I think we're covered here with our local coastal program and everything that's kind of packed into that.
Maybe if it took longer and cost more, we'd build fewer big houses.
That, that wouldn't be a, a good justification for, for the review. The review, it's specifically prohibited using SEQA as that type of, of instrument to cause cost and delay to a project. So the purpose of SEQA is just to analyze any potential substantial impacts on the environment. And that's what we're concerned with here. And I also caution the commission that you want to be consistent in how you're applying these exceptions to the, to SEQA. And if you are looking at the review here, I would look for if there's an exception to the exemption such as unusual circumstances or things along those lines, if you don't find this applies. But it does specifically say that it applies to both a, a single-family residence and to accessory structures and to a, it's not a guest house, a second dwelling unit, I think.
I think Bonnie's explanation made a lot of sense.
It's good, let, let me add one more comment, though, that's just for future reference for everyone up here. Section 15303 also specifies when it says, a house or a guest house, it then says, "The numbers of structures described in this section are the maximum allowable on any legal parcel." That seems pretty clear-cut to me, so I, I just, I, I feel like we're just going to have to agree to disagree.
Well, when they're talking about the maximum allowable on a, on a legal parcel in Malibu, you are allowed to have both a single-family residence and a secondary dwelling unit, so it would be covered by that.
We're, we're looking at three, though, right? That poolhouse is, is habitable.
You're interpreting that to be a dwelling unit versus an accessory structure, right? That would be.
Well, it's an accessory in the same way that a guest house is an accessory. It's a, it's a second guest house, basically.
Well, and just. I mean, in a poolhouse, they're allowed to have a bathroom, is that correct, Bonnie? It's, I mean, under our code, it would, it fits within what's actually allowed.
Correct, but, but this has two bathrooms in it. So that's one of.
A men's side and a women's side, I mean, it's a big, I.
It's hard to project if you do it, what somebody's going to do in the future, what, so it is what it is, and I think we've got to judge it based on what it is versus.
We try to, we try to use common sense and not be too cynical about what people might do in the future that they haven't done today.
If I may, we'd never envision that as anything other than a poolhouse, with a his and a hers side for, for changing. We're certainly willing to, to record an affidavit saying that we will not, you know, use it as a living quarters or, or convert it to an ADU at any point.
That could be helpful.
Hey, one other quick question, sorry, just kind of in the lines of where we were going in this. On the impermeable coverage, how we've got a limit at 25,000 square feet, we tend to focus on the TDSF limit. But does, maybe if you can just give a little comment or a little education to me at least, does that help get us kind of away from that SEQA requirement on each property by having an impermeable coverage limit? And if so, kind of how does that play into, you know, the Commissioner Hill's questions?
I think all of our development standards contribute to limiting environmental damage, that's, that's what they're aimed at. So, yeah, I think certainly the impermeable coverage limit contributes to, to that minimizing of impacts because it contributes to protection of water quality and minimizes runoff and more permeability on the site and things like that.
When I see, I mean, I understand for the living conditions, but when I see that large area in the center of the structure also, it's like, okay, well, that much more is kind of, is contributing to a potential SEQA concern. But as long as that impermeable coverage has that kind of in mind, I have a little more comfort, you know, at least from, from my own awareness. So that, just an observation from your.
And my last question is, and I should probably know the answer to this, but I, I see a number of, a majority of non-native plants on the planting schedule, on the landscape plan? And this may be a question for staff. What, what is the rule regarding any native plants requirement? I mean, the plants here are, there are a lot of lovely plants, but they're from all over the world.
There are different zones in which you can have native and non-native plants. Within the first 50 feet of your primary residence, you can have non-native plants. And then it goes out 100 feet, it, it decreases incrementally. And then after like 150 feet, I'd have to reach, I'd have to check with the biologist on that, it's only native plants allowed.
And so you're quite comfortable with how this is configured? I know we already said no palm trees, et cetera.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Just a question of the applicant, if I could. Just in looking at your plans, I want to confirm the garages. In the plans, it always said, "Single-family residence, 8,605 square feet, including garages." What do you estimate the size of the garages at, give or take?
Well, the, the living area of the house, the conditioned space is 6,966 square feet, and I could quickly do the math for you. But it's about 1,600 square feet for, you know, a four-car garage and some storage and workshop space. and some storage and workshop space.
Got it, okay. So about sixteen-hundred is the two kind of wings there that had the garage and the garage and workshop?
That's correct, yeah. I should point out that one of the challenges in in this site is, you know, we have to locate it back off off of merit to hit the flat area of the lot and and minimize a lot of grading. And that requires, of course, getting the fire road back of the thing so that they have access to the entire house and the accessory structures. So that gives us a rather long fire road. So that that's going to be done with a semi-permeable paver to to minimize the impermeable hardscape.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mazza?
Just one small item first. On page three of thirteen, you say the maximum allowable area, buildable area is ten-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-six. In the compliance table, it's ten-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-three. That's just an error, I would assume.
Yes.
Okay. Now, on this, on the size scale, for comparison, that he showed in his presentation, he had sixty-nine-hundred-and-sixty-six square feet. And they're asking for ten-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-five, which is close to four-thousand-square-foot difference. Is that all garage, basically?
Sorry, Alan, what did you say the size of the garage was?
Sixteen-hundred.
Sixteen-hundred.
Your idea is about sixteen-hundred. The pool house is about six-hundred, and hold on, I've got the figure here, six-hundred-and-twelve square feet, and the the ADU is is nine-hundred square feet.
So where did you come up with the sixty-nine-sixty-six?
That's the conditioned living space. And so in order to, in order to compare apples to apples with the surrounding properties, the only data I have ready access to is from the the county assessor. And livable area is what they use. So for, for example, the house to the north is, you know, it's it's close to ten-thousand square feet, and it's got an underground garage. So I, you know, that's more than a two-car garage under there. So it's it's much, much bigger.
Okay. My comment on that would be, when I calculated it from the neighborhood, the average house was, I just used merit only because I didn't consider Bush the same entrance. And that gives a break to the to the applicant. I came out with seventy-two, forty-two. It's much lower if you count them all. But I question whether you can take a house that's ten-thousand-and-six-hundred and knock it down to sixty-nine-hundred because you're just, you're counting garages. The average house does not have two-thousand-square-foot garages. And if a garage is in a basement, it's not counted. So it's not part of the bulk and mass. So this house, from what I see, is the largest house in the neighborhood by far on the table we got an attachment for. And giving a break, just using the four houses on merit, which are all large, it's still fifty percent higher. So my biggest concern is the total size.
And I've I've been looking at similarly, it's like forty to fifty ti, uh, percent, one-point-four to one-point-five times the size of kind of the, depending on exactly where the neighborhood falls, which, I mean, a lot of these other cases we've looked at were like two, three X the averages. So, you know, it's not, it's not a, you know, doesn't jump out as far as some of the other issues before.
But it's still fifty percent.
Yeah.
Could we get a motion?
Well, may I point out that also in the in the assessors, they don't count accessory structures that are that are non-habitable, like pool houses. And there are other accessory structures in the neighborhood, but I don't know how big they are or what what use they are. So I was just looking at the the main residence.
Oh, I I know how you did it. I I'm just saying, we look at size of house. And I can understand the ability to take off, give a credit for not having a garage. But when it's a garage the size of a house, it's kind of hard to do.
I just want to take a moment and and just remind the commission. I know there's a lot of concern about large houses and the council's given direction about a new ordinance to come. But at this point, this house complies with all of our standards and it doesn't include any requests that involves a finding related to neighborhood character. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
I would make a motion for approval with the the condition, as the applicant suggested, that the pool house be, and I don't know how you'd phrase this exactly and and whether you could impose it even, but if there were a way to 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 put a restriction on, a deed restriction, saying this this will not be converted into an ADU in in future, the pool house specifically.
Habitable structure.
It's actually not allowed for a property to have two ADUs. You can only have one second dwelling unit. So that's already built into the code. So it's actually not necessary to to add that.
And I think we're complicating the process. I mean, you know, there's, go ahead, I didn't hear a second.
Then then the motion is to approve.
Can I get a second? I'll give it a second. Kathleen?
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Chair Earring?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay. You're welcome. We've got the item of the evening coming up next. Our, oh, excuse me, the item of the evening coming up next is Nobu. Would the commission like to take a ten-minute break before we get into Nobu? All right, ten minutes. We'll be back here at fif, ten-fifteen, ten-twenty?
Eight-fifteen.
Eight-fifteen, yeah, ten-fifteen. I'm I'm looking forward. Eight-fifteen, guys, so we cannot speak, yeah, we can't speak to anybody while this break takes place, so.
It says a one-year conformance review. Your calendar is different than mine. But Richie, could you give us a staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair Earring and members of the commission. What you have before you this evening is, as you mentioned, the, it's an annual review, one-year review of the conditional use permit. On the, about roughly February twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, I forget the exact date, but the last week in February, I visited the sta, the site as well as our code enforcement officers. We went out, took a copy of the conditional use permit, walked the site, and looked to see what matched the the permit and what didn't match the permit. Also included in your packet, so we have the results of our site inspection, but we also included the correspondence that we've received throughout the last couple of years regarding actions and things that have happened with the Nobu operation. Staff has been working, as documented in the report, with the applicant in an effort to try to remedy some of these actions that have happened on-site in before we got here. Now, for example, one of the concerns that the neighbors raised had to do with loud music and noise. We did work with them to address that issue on the rear deck, and no new correspondence had been submitted recently on that. There were also concerns about smoking of of employees next to a public beach access. We explained to the operator that through working with the county, it was determined that while you're not allowed to smoke on the beach, that carries on to public accessways. And there's Zonker Harris accessway right next to the restaurant. The applicant has since remedied that. But I'm going to go through a couple of the areas that we found non-compliance issues. And we'll have some site photographs of it and then also some discussion. This is an aerial photograph showing the two properties. Nobu, as you see highlighted there, to the left of the screen and to the right, is what is now Soho. At the time of the original approval of the CDP for the construction of the two restaurants and the joint-use parking agreement and the issuance of the original conditional use permits, it was contemplated at that time to be Nikita Restaurant. It would be essentially two restaurants. The purpose of this diagram is to show you that in the report that approved, the agenda packet that approved the original development on the site back in 'oh-seven, included with that was a resolution that adopted all of the findings and determinations that were made in that agenda packet. In the agenda packet, in the joint use discussion, and also in the resolution in the conditional use permit findings, it was detailed that the valet operation for the two sites would, they would both share an entrance that was at the western end of the parcel. So that is what is today Soho. Valet cars would enter there, and then they would exit on the Easternmost driveway. And that's what you see there in front of Nobu, the Easternmost, the Santa Monica side. The reason why this is important is that there was some determinations made that if the valet operation worked this way, there would be room for queuing up to ten cars. One of the problems that has been brought up to staff, now, we didn't observe it on the day that we were there because it was a weekday, is that the current valet operation utilizes, I should say, we saw the current valet operation, we didn't see the effects of it. The current valet operation utilizes the center driveway there. And cars enter that driveway and they split off to the right to go to Soho or they split off to the left to go to Nobu. That action has been, it's been reported to the city that by doing that, cars have been stacking up and queuing has extended onto the highway. We've had our code enforcement officers visit the site on the weekend and also on weekdays. These pictures are from Saturday about noonish. What you can see in the upper photo, I want to call your attention to the, trying to draw this for you here. In the upper photo there, there's a red pickup truck with its lights on. Now, if you move your eye down to the lower photo, you'll see the front end of that pickup truck there. You see an SUV in front of it, a black SUV. You see another car in front of that SUV. You see the valet attendant talking to that that car that's in front of the SUV. So you've got the pickup truck, the SUV, and that car the valet attendant is speaking with. Those three cars are still within the public right-of-way. And so one of the concerns And so one of the concerns that staff has observed on the weekends during periods of high traffic is that we have an issue with this valet queuing spilling over onto the highway where it should be all self-contained. Another concern that was brought to staff's attention was the use of off-site parking. Now, the applicant has initiated that with an ambition to prevent parking, of use of the parking on the highway, so employees taking up public parking or overflow cars for the valet operation taking up public parking. However, staff has a concern that, one, we don't know if the sites that are being used can accommodate the additional parking. That type of analysis needs to be done. Also, as we mentioned in the staff report, what was approved did not contemplate off-site parking, so right now, they should not be using off-site parking. The other issue that was brought to staff's attention about the off-site parking is a potential hazard that it presents when the valet attendants are jaywalking. Now, the applicant has informed staff that in an effort to address this, they have installed a video camera on the crosswalk so that there is a policy that any employees caught in jaywalking would be fired. However, today, it's hard to see in this photograph here, but if you look at the center light there on the signal arm, drop straight down in that first lane, you'll see a person. This photo was taken from our code enforcement officer's vehicle. Our code enforcement officer went out again this afternoon to visit the site, and in his words, this was a valet attendant who had parked a car across the street, and while traffic is stopped, the point of the picture is, as our code enforcement officer observed, the valet attendant is not in the crosswalk as the applicant has told us they would ensure. So we still have a concern. This was brought up by neighbors of the property. We've received, we haven't lately gotten complaints, but in the past, we received a lot of complaints. So this is just more of the valet operation to let you know of our concerns and what the city has been observing. This is a copy of the site plan that was part of the approval of the project. In this site plan, you can see the parking lot layout and the tandem parking. Tandem parking was contemplated and allowed through the joint use parking agreement and the conditional use permit because our code, as has been pointed out by the commission before, doesn't specifically say tandem parking, but it is something that could be done. The concern that staff has here is that if you look in the upper right-hand corner of the lot, you see two areas, and I'm sorry, I don't have a laser pointer with me, but the area that runs parallel to what would be the Zonker Harris access, that is for wastewater treatment systems. Thanks, Dennis. So this area here that runs parallel to the Zonker Harris access, this is an area that is designed for the wastewater treatment system, is my understanding, but that is a permitted area, and then we have shorter spaces here. There is another storage area here, and that storage area is for restaurant equipment, and that is on, as I mentioned, you see here, the permitted plans. Staff's concern is what is happening here. Staff had contacted the applicant roughly a year ago, and they did work with us to remove a storage container that was here and some recycling equipment that was taking up more of this parking area. What remains today, based off of our site visit, is that you have a couple trash bins here, a couple trash bins here, and some recycling equipment. Our concern is that these don't show up on the plan, and as a result, the applicant is correct in their statements with staff that you can still get the same number of cars here. However, our observation was that the cars were parked over the lines because, once again, they are using a valet, so you can fit cars there, but it results in compact spaces. Compact spaces are not consistent with what was approved by the commission in 2007. This is a photograph of that area from our site visit on the twenty-sixth. PCH would be here, that's the Zonker Harris beach access, and you have here the recycling equipment, and you have the bins here, and this edge here is the wastewater treatment area, which that is approved per the original design. It's just these materials here which force this car over. The parkway curb is here, from the sidewalk, a little bit of a planter. This car should be closer to that. Once again, what it results in, to be fair to the applicant, is that it results in basically substandard or compact spaces. However, as we mentioned, the purpose of our review was to look to find differences from what the commission approved, and that is a difference. Also, as staff pointed out, they were using amplified music right over the doorway. However, the complaints about amplified music have subsided. Staff hasn't received any further complaints within, I would say, the last calendar year. However, it is something that isn't consistent with the conditions of approval, so that's why we bring it up. Staff's recommendation this evening is that the commission give the applicant, continue this item until May twentieth, to allow the applicant time to do one of two things. The applicant can either work to propose an application to amend some of the condition, or to amend the conditional use permit to address the items that we bring up this evening. They can have time to make that application and provide evidence to the city, or the applicant can also simply just comply. The applicant could work with the neighboring property to redesign the valet so that it is consistent with the approved valet plans. In other words, all the traffic enter through the one driveway that is on the western portion of the two sites when you put them together and exit on the eastern portion. The applicant can also remove the containers and the recycling equipment from the parking lot to give back those two spaces, and also, the applicant could simply remove the speakers or turn off the music. So that is our, you know, we're here for the planning commission's direction, but staff recommends that before revocation proceedings are initiated or something else of that nature, that the applicant is given an opportunity to do one of those two things. I'm available for any questions, as well as the applicant. Thank you.
Richard, thank you very, very much. I would like to make a little detour at this point. Last Thursday or Friday, I can't remember which day it was, I received a letter that the city distributed from the applicant's attorney, a letter dated July eighteenth, 2018, that basically, as best I could tell, sort of defined what their position was dealing with off-site parking, and that in relationship to what the city position on some of those items could be. So Trevor, maybe if you have a moment, if you could sort of give us your review of that letter, so we understand what the city's position is.
Sure. I mean, a lot of that letter focused on the differences between required parking and not required parking, and there is a significant difference between those. I think the area where we'd probably depart most significantly is that even for not required parking, that would be, that's not something that's allowed as part of the use of the property here. In this case, there was no approval of an off-site valet plan that would allow them to park cars off their own site as part of the original CUP. So that would need to be something that is part of a CUP amendment application so that the impacts from sending that traffic and those people back and forth across the street can be managed and the impacts addressed to minimize those for the city.
Thank you, Trevor. And we're going to begin, open the public comment, and I guess there's disclosures.
I will start. I spoke today on the phone with Richard Molika about the situation just generally, and we came up with a few sort of hypothetical ideas about how things might be fixed in the future, but all that's very speculative. And I also found a coastal commission staff report referencing the CDP parking conditions for two-two-seven-six-one PCH, which I believe we call the Hakim property across the street, the office structure. And I found the language regarding public parking in that structure to be characterized quite differently than the way that Nobu's attorneys have been characterizing it so far, so we can get into that.
John?
Well, I have a lot of questions, but just disclosures. I have spent a lot of time in the Zuma's J Surf Shop over the years and have noticed on many occasions employees parking on the highway directly in front of the store, but I did not visit the site this time. That's it.
Commissioner Marks?
Just that I've, I think it's the second time we've heard from this team. I have been also in the area there and have seen what appear to be parking attendants, valets, whatever, running back and forth across the street as well. Other than that, no additional site visit for this review.
Okay. I visited the site today with Skylar Peak. We were out doing something else, and we decided to stop in and just talk, and we spoke to one of the owners. And basically, what I sort of, our discussion came down to, this is my opinion, and the commissioners can have their own, that I don't think there's anybody up here that wants to close down any business. That's not what we're here to do, all right? I think a successful business is good for Malibu in general, good for the residents, we want to see that go. However, I expressed my concern to the owner that I thought the language of the letter that Trevor gave us, you know, from the attorney, sort of was one of these, it's my way or the highway letters, all right? And when I spoke to the owner, he sort of expressed a comment that says, no, we're, you know, we're willing to try and work with you guys to come up with solutions that work for both parties. And I think that was part of my conversation, you know, well, we want to keep making Nobu as successful as we can. We've also got an issue dealing with traffic, which has been, you know, I've heard about that forever, and public safety, so I was hoping that we could find a path that said there's a way to come to a conclusion that works for both of us, right? Works for Nobu, works for the residents, and works for the structure. And then the owner that I spoke to said he thought that was an acceptable path to go down. So I would appreciate it, we're going to open the public comment here in a second, and I would appreciate the speakers from Nobu to sort of give us an idea whether the letter that we received from the attorney is sort of your final stance, all right? That says, here it is, this is what we're going to do, or if you guys are willing to take a look at ways, and we'll work with you, okay? Ways that we can resolve this issue to the benefit of both parties. And I think if you can give us a real crisp answer to that in your presentations, I think it will help provide direction to the rest of the commission as we discuss this thing and keep us from getting mirrored or mucked in the, whatever, we don't want to get mucked into, all right? That's, those aren't even good words, but you get the idea. All right, so, very technical words. All right, so with that, I would like to open the public hearing, and the first speaker from Nobu is, they get three minutes. Sina? Come on up. Okay, you got, you got a total of, let me just kind of, no, you got, you got two speakers, so there's six, three minutes each.
If they're speaking separately, they each get three minutes. If they're donating time, instead of speaking separately, they could donate a minute.
I've got two speaker slips. You guys, you're going to have three speakers? How many speakers do you want? You get four minutes.
Four minutes? It would be five minutes, you have two people donating to them?
Oh, you got one, one person donating. If you want to fill out another slip, you can give them another minute.
Well, we'll ask questions also.
So you guys decide, if you fill out a slip, you'll get?
We're just going to answer questions.
Okay. All right, you're on. Kev, your name, please.
Thank you, Chair Earring. My name is Ben Resnick, and my associate, Sina Samimi, is here with me from Jeffrey Mangles, Butler &amp; Mitchell. Thank you very much, and let me get to the point, time's very short here. Yes, so, first of all, the July eighteenth letter that we wrote was based on a very comprehensive survey we engaged upon that Nobu had to pay for, looking at all the properties up and down PCH that could potentially be available for rentals of parking spaces. We then had to go into the records of the coastal commission, pull out their records, look to see what restrictions there were. And while one commissioner may disagree with our interpretation of one particular property, Mr. Hakim's property, he has a condition in there that was, dates back to, I think, the seventies, that a typical condition that basically said, you know, you should, your parking has to be available to the public for beach-going, to beachgoers. That's the condition. It's not a prohibition that you can't also utilize it. So, for example, at nighttime during the week, there aren't really beachgoers, and that's really an important time for us. So we did this analysis, we wrote a proposal, we submitted it back in July. We've written many emails, quite frankly, to your staff saying, we haven't received a response, we'd like to talk about it, please respond. Not until now. We are a little frustrated with that because part of that proposal was there that we would, we would go ahead and, we did assign, for example, the leases, the parking leases to Nobu, they're used to be in a valet's name. There were various conditions that were asked of us to do by the staff going back to 2017. We've done those, we've cured many of the issues. If you, if you take it all down to what's really bothering people, right? It's the notion that, yes, Nobu is very successful, has its peak hours, and there's, as you saw, these photos, which I would point out, by the way, that those two trucks, they're in the public right-of-way, yes, they're in the parking lane, actually in the red zone lane where the bus stop is, they're not in the flow of traffic, they're trying to enter. I don't know why the valet's talking to the guy at the entrance. I've entered off PCH to many of your restaurants, and I'm waiting to get into places too. The point is that it's not the common thing. The, this valet of ours that crossed the street, I guess, this afternoon, or it ran across and jaywalked, I mean, that's not acceptable. We have a written policy we've adopted since 2017 hearing here that says, if you're caught, you'll be fired. Tomorrow, that may be the last day for this gentleman, if we can get him on our video to show who it was. I would like to say that to answer the chair's question, yes, we do want to work cooperatively with the city. Nobu is, I hope Nobu is viewed here as an important partner in the city's success. It is world-renowned, obviously. What we'd like to do is, we would engage the services of a traffic engineering firm to analyze the circulation flow, to look at, trying to improve the analysis that perhaps the commission feels is lacking. We're willing to do that, retain their services, look at those options, and then after we get some ideas, we'll, you know, certainly share that with the city and work with the city to trying to find that. But please don't consider Nobu intransigent when it says it's not going to file an amendment to, an application that's been granted. That's not the way to look at it. The fact is that all the conditions in there are being complied with. What I heard from staff is, we opine that there is maybe a noncompliance. The fact that the CUP is silent on things doesn't mean we're violating things and because that there may be some valets running across. And certainly, the use of off-site parking is a voluntary effort. It's not required. Nobu can just as well tell its customers, go park on PCH, go find your own parking. It's a service we're doing, and it's costly. Same thing with the, so I guess time is up, I don't want to abuse my time, but I would have other, I would ask that you look at the photos we submitted today on the condition of the trash bins and where things are, because I think you'll get a better look and see that we're not losing spaces. We actually can comply.
Okay. I think you were the only speaker for the applicant, then I take it, is that correct?
Sounds that way.
Okay.
But we're all here to answer questions. We're here for, management is here.
Let me just, before you leave, could I ask you one other question? And it goes back to my original statement.
Yes.
Crisply, is Nobu willing to work with the city based upon the issues that is brought up to get those resolved to the satisfaction? We are the Malibu Planning Commission, we're not the Nobu Planning Commission. I'm listening to what our attorney says we should be doing, and I would like to hear you say crisply that Nobu is willing to work with the city to get those issues resolved and save us a lot of time, okay? In terms of what, where the meeting could go. And like I said in the beginning, I do not believe there's a person on this panel that has any interest in diminishing your ability to do business. You are, you are a benefit to our city, okay? And I believe that. But, like I said, this traffic issue is not new, okay? And the pictures he showed up there were taken in March. I live by the Civic Center, I drive down that road a lot, and when you get into the middle of the summer, so, I'm not going, you've got the point. Are you guys willing to work to help resolve the issues that the city attorney has brought up?
Yes. It's an absolute yes. That's what our July letter was about. We followed up with multiple emails asking the city to meet about these and discuss it. The answer is yes. We would like to see a solution, believe me, we would, right now.
A solution based upon the concerns the city has?
A solution that, yeah, as I understand, the A solution that, yeah, as I understand the concerns, the concerns are, I think it comes down to, what you're doing is not safe? I mean, you've got valets running across, that's not safe. We agree. And for that, we've already implemented a very harsh policy, put cameras on, and we're ready to fire anyone who does that. But what else is the question? So, the city's answer, Mr. Chair, has been a legal one to me. And the legal answer from the city is, well, we believe, because you're using off-site parking, you have to get our permission. And we're saying, well, wait a minute, we don't need to use off-site parking. We are not required to do that. We're doing it because we think it's a service to do that. Now, if there's a problem in the way we're doing it, because it's all excess parking, it's not the code required.
Hang on a second. Trevor, is there a problem with off-site parking, in your opinion?
What do you mean, a problem?
The issue, he said he's doing off-site parking, it's a benefit to his, and the city should consider that an okay thing to do?
He's correct that it's, that he's not required to park off-site. In fact, it's, it's not allowed.
That if he's parking off-site.
Is actually the, the position of staff in this situation. So, it, it could be a benefit to the city if it's done properly.
Okay.
But in order to do that, it would need to be through a CUP amendment. Mr. Resnick, did I, did I hear that you say that Nobu is not willing to do a CUP amendment? Or is, or is that just?
No, we're willing to work with the city on the, on the solution of the circulation problem. That's what this is, is a circulation problem, in terms of how you get people in and out and the volume we have. Filing an amendment, I don't believe is required or necessary, because we have an option, and, and the option is, we don't have to provide the off-site, because we'd still be consistent with our CUP if we didn't. And all that would do is create more chaos, but I'm not here to debate that, I'm just saying, that would create chaos on the streets. So, the answer is, do we need to file an amendment? I don't, legally, we've analyzed that, we've said no. My point to the chair simply was, all we've heard back from the city as to why we should is a legal argument saying, well, you have a CUP, and yes, you meet all the code requirements, and we didn't put any restrictions, but since you are volunteering off-site parking, we want to now ask you to amend your application. And I'm saying, that's, that's not in your code, that's not required. And so, again, I ask, don't consider that to be an intransigent position. We want to solve the problem. We want to work with the city. We'll hire a traffic engineer that's familiar with this area, one that's done other projects. We'll have them analyze it, we'll work with staff, but to basically say, you either file an amendment or you're in non-compliance is, is just, is not a, not only not a fair position, it's not a legal position. And so, the answer again is yes, we will, we will work with the city on parking solutions, and, and we'll hire the consultant and pay for it and have an analysis done and report back and, and do what we can to ameliorate any impacts created by that. And again, I get back to, what's the beef? What's the impact? So far, what I've heard is, it's valets running across jaywalking.
No, there's actually more to it, and it's been expressed a number of times. There's, you have a huge staff, Nobu has a huge staff, and the only, whether it's required or not, as a good neighbor to the city, it would, it would be a benefit to everyone, we believe, for Nobu to take a more proactive approach to dealing with the parking for the staff. We, this, we're happy to look for solutions with you, but we've, we've met with a lot of resistance and just disinterest in trying to do something that isn't technically required, but that's a concern that we've heard from neighbors over and over again, is that there's 60 to 70 people on a, on a regular shift, and they're parking all over the street. The street is available for everyone, but it's a big monopolization of parking.
Said a lot there, Bonnie, I appreciate that. I, I can say that, of course, one potential solution, maybe a weekend, here's your problem with the staff. The, the last shift at Nobu is at 3:00 PM. That's the night, okay, the 3:00 PM shift works through the end and closing. We can't get parking at 3:00 PM. We tried, because the, the tenants are using those parking lots in those buildings. They don't become available till later at night, so it doesn't help us with that shift. Perhaps on a weekend, we might be able to do that. On weekends, we may be able to use those buildings to alleviate some of that issue. You use the word monopolize, but I beg to differ, there are 150 employees here on the pier who park on PCH. I don't know that the pier's monopolizing. The problem is, the issue really is, I still think, it's not that our employees are monopolizing or using the spaces there. I think the concern has been this, this crossing the street, moving the car across, and people running across. You know, I may be wrong, but we are willing to look at solving the employee parking problem on weekends when we may be able to get space for that, for those shifts. But we've tried, and so our problem is, we can't, we can't park the 3:00 PM shift in any of the buildings, because they're not available.
Okay.
Richard, did you want to add anything at this point?
What I'd like to point out to the commission too is that staff did respond, and they mentioned their July letters, and I think it's important to understand that staff did actually call them in for a meeting. We sat down on September 8th, I believe it is, in the staff report, and we had our Public Works Department sit down with them as well to go over traffic. And we did request that, at that time, that they gave us a traffic study or something to discuss how cars were being moved across the street. And we also brought up the fact that while they're questioning, as they brought up our legal basis for saying why the off-site parking is an issue for the city, staff did point out that we need to verify that the sites they're using can adequately accommodate off-site parking because of those sites with their own needs, whether it be, as Commissioner Hill's question, he asked me this afternoon, are we perhaps displacing public parking that was meant for the general public, not necessarily for a retail or commercial use to purchase? Or are we displacing required parking for that business? In that meeting too, staff did ask for alternative valet parking plans, to which none have been presented. Staff did ask about returning the, at that time, though, we didn't realize that that was the code requirement, but our Public Works, who is now a Public Works Engineer, who's now the Director, did suggest that they consider doing a valet plan essentially that was approved. And that item was not received with enthusiasm, and once again, there was no follow-up.
I'll give it the enthusiasm, because everything Mr. Malika just said, we're willing to do, including, when we get a lease on a space, we're willing to work with staff to show them the availability of those spaces, that they're not, they're not, that they are in fact available, not taking away from the public. But that doesn't require an amendment of a CUP.
Okay, thank you.
We can work with them, and we will.
Thank you very much. And it wasn't as crisp as I had hoped for, but okay, Melissa, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Marissa Coughlin. In the staff report, you'll see different correspondence. I represent about 40 property owners, business owners, and tenants in the area of the restaurant. On the staff reports, starting on Exhibit 1 of 19, and they're all dated and timed, it shows the pre-development, redevelopment of the site, and it shows the ongoing problem, which still is ongoing today. I presented to you an exhibit, which I just took at 2:00 this afternoon, showing a U-Haul truck bringing stuff into the restaurant, parked once again in the red fire zone in front of the hydrant, blocking the public accessway, and blocking the exiting of a tenant at the adjacent condominium. The, all of the things that have, Mr. Resnick says are taken care of, are constantly ongoing. I don't know how much time our code enforcement officer spends there, but he may have a sleeping bag in his car, I'm assuming. I can provide, I've, I've taken enough pictures and been given enough documentation by residents and adjacent business owners who are impacted by all of this to fill a six-inch three-ring binder. There, there was a McCormick ambulance that was trying to get by last week, and there were cars lined up as exhibited in Mr. Malika's photograph, where they were coming in. The original plan with the entrance on the, on the west and exit on the east was just what Mr. Malika said, so the cars could queue up, and they have cones out on the Soho side in the Caltrans right-of-way, preventing people to come in. And they also have the other thing blocked, they still have an extra container there over the septic, you can see in the photographs. They have the trash, Beaches and Harbors has been beside themselves with the issues with the public accessway in the restaurant. The neighbors there appreciate the restaurant, many of them go there as customers, but they want to live their daily lives and not have the threat or impacts of potential, you know, harm. Some of the kids there that have grown up in that area all along are now starting to drive. The congestion's horrible, the traffic is horrible. The staff is still parking on both sides of the street as, in front of Zuma Jays and other businesses, and it just needs to be handled. An amendment's appropriate. Without amendment, it's just you say, I say, you know, we all say. The rules have to be the same for everybody, and if it, if it's clear, then it should be put in amendment. So I, I'm not sure how this is going to be handled, because my, some of my photographs are from 2014, and that's how many times I've been before this commission, and I think it's really important. And that the trash compactor and other was right on the sidewalk, and kids were playing in. I gave Beaches and Harbors pictures going down the accessway of kids playing in their compacters. They now have moved them in front of a parking spot on-site, but they were right on the public accessway. Thank you.
Melissa, thank you very much. Ryan Embry?
Thank you. As a former chair of the Public Safety Commission, we've had a lot of discussion about parking valets and vest requirements for, for valets that cross PCH and so forth. The, I think it's been about nine years since I've eaten there, but that was back when the valet parking was only $12. I wanted to mention that it's nice that they have a fabulous attorney to represent them who's dealt with this issue so much that he can't pronounce the case planner's name correctly. I wonder what the intent is of the restaurant to comply, because as Marissa just said, there have been complaints, I believe, since they opened. And the concern of management does not appear to be sincere, or even an intent to comply, that their self-enforcement is always a little too late and just a promise. I agree with the planning director's synopsis 100%. I think sometimes Disneyland forgets it's in the city of Anaheim, and that's exactly what we have going on here. This is a fabulously successful organization, but they've outgrown their parcel. They need to scale back, and I was offended somewhat by some of the concepts and statements, even by the chair, I'm sorry, Richard, or Steve, but to not consider any corrective action that would limit their gross receipts is the way I interpreted that. And I want to remind the commission, that's not a consideration for you to consider in any of this approval. I'd like Trevor to use my time to answer that if necessary, but I would like you to use your time and ask about that. This was mentioned previously at another hearing, it was a Verizon Wireless. We don't want to do anything that would impact their bottom line, they'd have to put a pole up somewhere, it might cost them a few dollars. But those considerations are not part of the enforcement and conditions of approval, and I see the city attorney nodding in affirmation. So, there is a center driveway, I don't know if that is needed any longer, if it could be removed and afford some more street parking, or if it's required for fire department access, it could be blocked with vertical delineators that would flatten momentarily as they drive over. Diminishing the ability to do business, that was the phrase I just heard. Again, please do not make the mistake of considering that in your approval. The compliance problem, and the report is the most beautiful way of saying, they are in total violation of almost everything that anybody's complained about. I understand their cash cow, and they give gross receipt taxes, or taxes to the city, as any restaurant would, but the public nuisance that has resulted and the detriment to public safety on Pacific Coast Highway is completely unacceptable. That's noted in the report, that it's backing up traffic on Pacific Coast Highway, and I would ask the commission for 30 seconds, this is my deposition, it came in two boxes for the Southern California Edison and City of Malibu being defendants for a traffic accident. So, these problems, and the other one that I've submitted to the record, it's up there, is the traffic accident report, number 107-00755-1017471. I'd like that to be considered as an example of an accident that can happen on Pacific Coast Highway with brain damage. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Anybody else like to speak on this subject? If not, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back up to the table. Commissioners, comments? John, you want to go first?
Yes. The first thing I see about this is, it hasn't been, it hasn't come to us in years, years, and we've asked. So we've had a problem go on for years and years and years, and now it comes to us saying, let's deal with it in May. It's just a comment, but one of the conditions of their approval was that these parking agreements were going to be reviewed by the city planning manager annually and changed if necessary. And that's Condition C, joint-use parking agreements. And I don't know if we've ever done that. And so, we get behind because we let people do things, and then we go, oh gee, there's a problem, when, when it was contemplated in the beginning. Now, Richard, I have a question. This is just from my memory, but it's in here a little bit. When it was originally approved, the city demanded a $400,000 for the school, which I think is a little shaky to do, but, and a community room. And then it got approved again as the restaurant without that stuff. Is that the same CUP that just got amended, or, or how did that work?
I'm going to have to defer to Bonnie on that, I'm sorry. I've been working with this a bit shorter.
Were there two CUPS that came along? Because the first one.
For Nobu?
Yeah.
There was.
Well, there was one for whatever it was before.
I'm not aware of a CUP in effect for the prior restaurant.
Well, it's, it's in here somewhere, where they were going to have 400 square-foot community room and $400,000 to the school district.
There was, well, there was an original proposal, and I'm.
For Weintraub.
It, yes, it predates me also, but there was an original proposal that involved a development agreement, and that's, I think, what you're referring to.
So this CUP is only for this?
Right.
Okay. My main problem is off-site parking. What, number one, is it legal? We have these rules about required parking being within 300 feet, but not rules about other parking.
Yes, required parking has to be within 300 feet.
Correct, but where does it say, non-required parking can be beyond 300 feet?
The code does not address a distance for overflow parking, I'll just call it overflow parking, which is basically what this would be. However, there is a provision, I always forget the exact section, it's in the parking, at the end of the parking standards called usability, and it requires that a use permit be approved in order for one of these off-site lots to be allowed to make their required parking available to another off-site use.
Okay, so Nobu got a requirement to use valets.
Yes.
Which I assume was on their property.
There was no mention of off-site valet parking.
No, so.
Right.
Don't they need a CUP to operate a valet that is off of their property?
That, that's what staff was pointing out previously. Is that you, you do have, the commission has brought authority to add conditions to, to lessen impacts on the city from the use, and in this case, you'd be dealing with the impact of the traffic that it's generating in this situation, and to limit both the impact of that congestion, getting into the lot, getting out of the lot, and also in terms of how that off-site parking is used.
So right now, they're not operating legally off-site?
No, that's why the, the staff has pointed out that the options are either come up with a plan to better solve using off-site parking with a CUP amendment, and I haven't heard whether they're willing to do an amendment. It seems like they're taking a stance that they don't want to have to take an amendment, and that's fine, they don't have to amend their CUP to allow off-site parking, but then they would need to strictly comply with the parking plan in place, which requires them to park.
And then each property they use has to have a joint-use parking agreement? Or does that property have to have a CUP itself? For example, the Hakim Building.
The code says that, that a use permit would need to be approved by, for example, the Hakim property in order to allow the use for.
So they come to us for a CUP?
It doesn't. It doesn't. It just says use permit. It doesn't say what whether that's a CUP or a joint use parking.
Well, it's a permit by somebody, and it's obviously the city.
Right.
Okay.
It probably depend on the situation of how they want to park it also.
They seem to interpret that if you're going to going to Nobu for lunch or dinner, that's a public use. And the codes for the coastal commission talking about public access to the beach, where there is no beach in Nobu. So can they give away or take away space that's designated for the public, which is in the CUPs of several of these buildings?
The it's a the the coastal commission, that old coastal commission permit condition is a little less clear about what how much effect it has at this point because clearly the coastal commission issued a permit and didn't didn't appear.
It says for public use to go to the beach.
But they said the condition says that there's the that the coastal development permit will not be issued until the applicant submits a parking program that would allow for public parking for the beach in the off hours and stuff. The coastal commission can't find any record of such a such a program being submitted, but they issued the permit anyway.
I I think you be careful, you don't travel too far down about hypothetically whether they could.
No, I'm just wondering what has to happen in the future. Now.
They'll need to come back with a with a proposed amendment if they want to do an offsite parking. And in that case, then you'd be able to interpret these conditions.
Well, I I want to go to the other people, not them. Norm, Hakim, and the enclave, I think they call it. Now, that I believe that office building with the three offices is one of them.
Like I said, I, you know, they're not proposing that at the at this situation. I don't think you want to get too far into the analysis about these particular buildings or how.
But they're doing them right now. They say they are.
That's that's what we said, is that they need to come in for an amendment applying to do that or otherwise stop doing it.
Okay. And my question is, and Norm stood up here before us, said, if you if it's not legal, I'm not going to do it. And he stopped doing it. And then apparently the city looked the other way or something because he's doing it. Is he doing it legally? Is he leasing his property out for a valet service and a piece of property that has a CUP that says only two cars may be parked on it? Which is what his car wash CUP says.
I don't know what the details of of Norm's properties, the limitations about parking on his site, but it would be in violation of the CUP for Nobu to be sending people over to that location without it being part of their CUP.
If he had himself, if you were going after Nobu was out of the picture and somebody operated a valet service parking lot on their property, they would need a CUP, wouldn't they?
I would have to look at the particular situation, whether you're talking about required parking, excess parking, parking this condition.
What I'm saying, saying, a business, it's sort of like the Hertz lot, okay? Can a Hertz lot rent out its its spaces for other uses without some kind of permit? And I would say the answer's probably no. They need something. Probably, right?
Potentially. I think I said, I would want to look at a case by case before we make broad statements.
When we come back with case by case, I want to go through the details. For example, if they're using the enclave, I was around in 91 when they got their 90 when they got their permit. It was a two-story building. I drove up there yesterday. It's a three-story building. So maybe they filled in their parking with offices. I don't know. It was advertised at 33,000 feet for rent, and it was only permitted for 22. So maybe there's something wrong there. And that's what I want, if we come back, I want to know those things. Because it says specifically that we cannot let them use spaces that are required in the code. Now, a lot of this gets to, in my mind, our city council, as far as I'm concerned, made a huge error in permitting the parking on this property because they totally misunderstood the demand. And they did it, okay?
It was actually the planning commission.
Well, it went, no, this went to city.
This, no, the resolution's right here, was approved by the planning commission.
As I remember, it got appealed, but because I went to the city hearing, hearing all this stuff. But anyway, somebody made a huge error, and now we can't fix it. But I I want to ask you about municipal code 8.2, 8.01, which is nuisance abatement. And nuisance abatement talks about whenever you have basically interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property and obstructions of free passage and use customary manner, blah, 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 that's not legal. So is there a point at which a business disrupts the neighborhood so much that it's a nuisance? Because that's what this code is. So I've never heard anybody discuss that here. They say, we've got a CUP, and this is all we can do, all we have to do, but they, as far as I'm concerned, they're in violation violation of 828.
You're correct in terms of they're not allowed to create a nuisance, by the way they operate their business. And that is one of the grounds for revocation of a CUP is if it is creating a nuisance.
Okay, good. That's me.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes, thank you. Not to add insult to injury, but I think I may just be about to do that. I I learned only last night. I finally wanted to clarify this language that Mr. Samimi puts in the in the letter that characterizes their public parking or their the conditioned parking from the coastal commission for the office buildings across the street and specifically the Hakim lot, that that the public is allowed to park during weekends and holidays from the hours of sunset to sunrise. And that sounded kind of fishy to me. So last night I was able to go online, and I found a coastal commission staff report from 1999 that characterizes the it was a staff report about the pier. And it was comprehensive about parking and all the issues related to the pier and had a whole page about the office buildings across the street. And it singled out the Hakim property as an example of how that public parking condition works. So to be clear, this isn't the exact permit, but it is the permit that the coastal commission staff was referring to and quoting from and cited the permit number, which is not a permit number that we've seen on any correspondence from you. So bottom line, there's another layer here to explore as as we go forward here about what that permit really says. But what what the coastal commission says now is that the language you gave us is incorrect, that in fact, those office buildings, Hakim specifically, must make their parking lots and or parking structures available for public use during weekends, holidays, and from sunset to sunrise. That's every night. That's every time when they're out of business hours there, when it's beyond business hours, those spaces are for the public. Now, beyond that, I I found it really astonishing that Nobu's use of those spaces would be characterized as the public because we have a private enterprise contracting with a private valet company and presumably contracting with the office building themselves, another private company. And and the suggestion that the visitors, the visitor-serving nature of of Nobu somehow makes that completely compliant with the general public requirement of those parking spaces, that's two different things. Now, I think down the line, maybe there's a way to say, to go to coastal and in in working out some plan and say with with those office buildings, yeah, you need to definitely reserve some of these places every night for the general public, but maybe based on demand or whatever criteria you could work out, maybe some of those could be cut away. But as it stands, that coastal commission says those spaces that are there at night are for the general public.
Weekends and holidays.
No, weekends, holidays, and from sunset to sunrise. The point of it is that that, well, that's what I'm saying, that what you the language you have there is 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 not correct quote. And and what I'm telling you now, I'm quoting from the coastal staff in a report that's quoting the thing, but so we still don't have the exact underlying thing. But I think I think you might be in trouble on that one. Yeah. And the to characterize that the point of that condition was that the parking spaces don't go to waste, that that's just kind of absurd on its face. The point of it is to meet the public demand at peak times when there isn't parking anywhere else. And so the first use for those spaces should be for the general public. And if there's a way to squeeze you guys in, great. So it seems like the bottom line that is that that you're going to need a substantially different amended CUP to get through this because some of those spaces that you think you can rely on on a nightly basis are not going to be available. I think that's I think that's what we're going to find when we find that the actual coastal.
Commissioner Hill, you look at the documents, if they propose whatever they propose, you'll evaluate it at that point in time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're just concerned that they want to look into all the details about what conditions are applying to these spaces?
And I think it's 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 very, very likely that the quote that we've gotten from your attorneys about what that condition is is not accurate. Yeah, and just to point out that they you also characterize those spaces as that the property owner, the office buildings, is legally required to rent its parking spaces to the public pursuant to the coastal development permit. That's not accurate. It's they're they and now this is looking at the enclave's condition permit. They're merely allowed to charge the public a market-based fee for the parking, but they're required to make that that space available to the public. Whether they want to charge them a fee for or not is their their choice. But to say that they're required to rent the space is is not accurate. Thank you.
Commissioner Marks?
Okay, let's see. So first off, I'm trying to kind of just put together in my head the differences between the kind of the photos we're seeing here and, Richard, I think slide seven, if you could bring up that slide. I just want to understand a little better what we were looking at and what you had versus what, because these photos were taken almost same time you had that one. So is is it just that we park not as dense for this photo, but we park very dense for that photo? Because when I look at that truck, it's parked about 10 feet closer to the recycling equipment than the photo in it was submitted by the applicant. So maybe if we could just kind of understand what the difference is in condition, maybe Ben, if you could help address this, why why is he such a discrepancy between what city captured and what your photo shows?
I can speak if you'd like, Richard, to speak first. I can let him go.
Whatever, whatever. And, Richard, are you familiar with a photo that was submitted by the applicant as well?
What I can tell from that photo is that it appears the the number of trash bins, we'll say, do not project, the number of trash bins running parallel to the sidewalk there.
Right.
They've reconfigured their trash bins essentially. They've pushed them further back, it looks like, so that the cars are not getting pushed away from the curb. That way, the the black car and the red car that you see there, they're now within the the lines there. To me, that's the biggest difference I could see.
Okay, so basically, in the last couple of weeks, because you took this on the 26th, they took theirs today, at the same time, it looks like Marissa took hers, because that same truck was in both photos, by the way. Yeah, so so they just had 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 moved the trash bins a little more towards the road or towards the sidewalk, I guess, in that case, from what you observed when you guys were there. Is that fair? Richard, sorry?
I would say it is because what I'm what I don't see in their picture that we observed, the code enforcement officers and I, is that when we were there, cars were parked over the line. Like, for example, that truck was parked over the line, but in these photographs here, you can see that in the correspondence that they submitted this afternoon, the vehicles appear to be within the parked, the white lines there. It's hard to see the white line between, say, this Porsche here and the BMW, but I can make out a faint.
Yeah.
White line between the by the rear wheel of that BMW.
Okay, great. And then and then the next the next thing that really.
I can respond to that.
Oh, please do, please do, sorry.
So the the way that this photo was taken, and I was there when it was taken, he was standing, if you're looking at a tandem parking spot, this is the back car that's furthest towards the end of the property. And there was another, either Cadillac Escalade or Yukon or huge black car in front of it on the day that this was taken. So he was standing way up next to where the trash bins are, and the photos that we submitted give you the full context of, no, if you zoom out and if you look at where the trash bins are located, two cars will fit there. And on this very day that you're looking at, they had two huge cars parked there on purpose to show that even when you have the trash bins there, you can fit all of the the required parking on the site. And that's what Richard confirmed during his presentation.
And so like if the photographer in this photo were to kind of lean back, they'd be touching that Escalade, it sounds like.
Exactly. There was there was a Cadillac Escalade right in front of it, or, you know, it could have been a Yukon or something like that.
Right.
And if you were to stand where the photographer stood in the Nobu photos that we submitted, you would see both of those cars and you would see the the trash bins to the left. It's just that this photo was taken at an unreasonable angle that didn't make any sense.
Okay.
And I was there when it was taken, and it it didn't make sense to me at the time either.
Okay. And then in what Richard stated, you have pushed those bins back since that photo was taken as well?
I don't know the answer to that question. No, I thi- I think those trash cans are the same place that they are in the photos that we submitted. It's just that you're not standing a foot away from them in our picture.
Fair enough, fair enough. Then the other thing, that's just kind of a, just trying to understand a little bit what's going on better there. But now where I really got drawn to your document here, I'm just trying to understand in what you submitted on page, what, 31 of 90? This was correspondence sent in, let me see, it was stamped the 13th, it looks like. Just bring this up. So it just helped me understand what what so we've got A through H marked for parking. What exactly are all those spots then for? I mean, I know you've got kind of the timelines and everything on that, but what what is that parking kind of, why did you take the time to outline that? For for who is that parking designated or or, you know, outlined for?
Commissioner Marks, I don't have the page. Can you refer me to the date of the letter and the page number again?
Sure, sure. It looks like it's in the PDF. It's something that was submitted, I have it stamped by Kathleen. This was received on the 13th. It came directly from you, I believe, and yeah, from from Sina. And then in that PDF document, it's a letter you provided, actually, if I just describe the attachment, it's where you had kind of a fact sheet of your parking and you go through sites A, B, C, you continue through H.
Okay.
And then you kind of have a math.
Now I know what you're talking about, Commissioner Marks. Okay, I I know this was probably the November 27th.
Okay.
2017 letter. And in exhibit.
Exhibit two, I believe.
Exhibit two, right. Okay, I'm looking at that. Let me explain what was happening in that exhibit. When we were working with staff to come up with where we can have, because in the last planning commission meeting, one of the issues that came up several times was, well, where are you parking your employees' cars? And our our employees are parked on PCH and wherever they can find parking in the area. We don't use, and and this was a little bit unclear in the staff report, we tried to clarify that in our letter, but our valet operators do not park employee cars using the valet system. The employees just park where they can find parking and they come to work. So what we tried to do is we surveyed the entire area, and this was just kind of a useful visual aid of all of the different property owners that management at Nobu reached out to and try to see, look, do you guys have any parking available on your site that we can rent from you to get our employees to park there to try to alleviate the traffic situation? We went to each of these, and then the next page on exhibit two shows our results. And part of what Mr. Resnick was talking about when he was up here is that the timing of when these parking spaces become available didn't really overlap with the the timing that we needed them to be available. Our second shift comes in at 3:00 PM, and these operators are using their parking until past that. And so we wouldn't be able to to use those spots. And so what we are now going to try to do is modify our our ask of these other neighboring owners and try to see if they have parking at least available on the weekends that we can use. And that might be able to alleviate some of the problems. When we had approached them back in 2017 originally, we were just asking about parking in general, like who can house our 60 employees who are parked during these shifts? Everyone said, no, sorry, we don't have any space for you. Now, we're going to go back as a result of this latest round of communications with staff and just see if we can at least find. and just see if we can at least find parking for them on the weekends, which we think basically that's where the problem lies. So I, I don't know if I answered your question, Commissioner.
Yeah, I think so. But, but then what, what doesn't quite fit is the math, so the math you gave, you just said, our 60 employees. But then your study in the same letter, the date of November 27th, you say, yeah, but it should only be 35 to 40 spots, maybe 50 at worst. Why are we trying to find 155 spots in your parking space analysis if you only need 60?
That's for overflow patron parking. So what, what's being shown on page two of exhibit two is how many parking spaces we have that are available to us, because that's one of the questions that staff had of us. It's like, okay, well, where are your valet operators parking all of their cars for your overflow patron parking? So this was a survey that also gave all of that information, and it continued, and we continued down the line. We asked the enclave, PC Greens, Colony House Liquors.
Yeah. So, so that says you are parking your guests off-site more than 300 feet, et cetera.
Yes. And, and the distinction there is, and, and I don't, I don't want to speak, I don't know if this is directly related to your question. But the, there's a big distinction, as Mr. Russon pointed out, in the code, between required parking and overflow parking, as, as Bonnie defined it earlier. And so what, what we have on our site through the Jupa with Soho is the total number of required parking as laid out in the code. And, and you're right, Commissioner Maza and Commissioner Uring, the code may be flawed in the sense that that's what it required at the time when, when this was being applied for, but that's not our issue. I mean, we have all of our required parking as required by the code, and that's been satisfied. So everything that's being done on exhibit two with these other properties that are off-site are for overflow parking only. So these are patrons who are coming, the lot's already full, and, you know, we're not just going to say, go find parking on PCH by yourself. Our, our CUP actually requires that all of our parking onsite be done by valet. And an interesting portion of that, and this also relates to one of the things that Commissioner Maza brought up earlier, the CUP condition, it says that valet cannot stage cars on PCH. That's one of the conditions. And that implicitly implies that if you're not staging cars on PCH, then you are going to be taking cars off, off-site at some point if you're not staging them there.
Yeah. And I guess my, my main observation in calling this out is just that, you know, it's clear that right now, you know, whether we call it overflow or what have you, numbers fit seats, but bodies don't fit numbers, something however you want to put it. And we have more cars for patrons than we, we accommodate. So.
How many off-site parking spaces do you guys need to park your, your employees?
Okay.
And whatever your overflow is, I mean, if you sat down today and said, you know, I want to solve this problem. I want to get everybody off PCH. I want to put them on a lot someplace where, you know, how many spaces do you need?
I'm, I'm going to maybe, we'll, we'll have to look at that more closely. But, but I can tell you that our off-site parking needs for patrons is entirely satisfied. There's no situation in which we have a patron coming to the restaurant.
The question is, how many off-site spaces do you need, including your, your employees?
Including employees?
Right, right, there's the, the overlap. The number is probably around 200 to accommodate staff and patrons for all the overflow off-site. Roughly in that area, yeah.
And I'm confused. There was just something you had said a minute ago, is you said that we do sometimes park our overflow guests off-site. But now you also just said, we never park guests off-site.
No, 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 we don't never park guests on PCH. We're not allowed to.
Okay.
In fact, there's a condition in our CUP that valet may not stage cars on PCH, so.
Okay, so, but we do park some guests off-site, so there's no conflict.
Absolutely.
We park a lot of guests off-site.
A lot of guests are, are parked off-site. And I would just like to submit for the record, so the record is clear, a copy of the actual development permit for the Hakim property that Commissioner Hill referenced, so that, so that there's no doubt that what we quoted in our letter was accurate, because it is, and it's in here. So if you have the ability to make a copy, I'd.
If you provide that, we'll have it circulated to the planning commissioners.
Actually, while, while we're clarifying the record, that is already submitted. It's in the November 27th, 2000. It's the same one that you were looking at exhibit two. The November 27th, 2017 letter attaches as exhibit seven the entire permit for, for the Hakim property, and the relevant portions are actually pasted, copied and pasted onto our November 27th letter. It is quoted accurately throughout.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll have to find the permit that the coastal commission quoted that had a different number that they were quoting from to see. I mean, it, it could be a situation, there are two different permits for the Hakim property from different dates, and they have different language in them. So, worst case, worst case scenario, you, you have to maybe start thinking about what if none of those spaces are available?
No, no, absolutely. You're right, Commissioner. Our concern, well, we did this intensive survey of everyone. We looked at those coastal development permits. We, Sina went down to Oxnard, looked at all the files. The issue is that the condition here that they, that they applied was, was for weekends and holidays from the hours of sunset, sunrise. So one of the things we thought, okay, then we'll do weekdays, not weekends and not holidays. But weekdays at least, we should be able to use them at night when you really don't have beachgoers. And, and, you know, we, we think that that's something, again, Mr. Chair, we'd like to work with staff. We'll have a, an analysis done, we'll hire the traffic engineer, and we'll try to be able to find some, some means of accomplishing the goal.
May I just, just to suggest that, that the notion that the public needs, there's a demand for general public spots at, say, 3:00 AM on weekends and holidays, that seems absurd, that the demand would be in the evenings. And so I, I suspect that when we find the other CDP for Hakim that the coastal commission has referenced, you'll see it says, and, between sunset and sunrise, and, and, you know, so we'll, we'll have to sort that out.
Commissioner Hill, you'll look at the documents, if they propose that, right?
Chair Marks, we're not done.
Yeah, that's, thank you. And, no, that's okay. And I know earlier, Mr. Resnick, I believe you had called out that there was a communication to your employees not to jaywalk. I saw the communication to employees not to make noise. Was that also, was that part of the packet, and I might have just missed it?
You have that? Yes, we did. We, we actually amended the rules, circulated it after the 2017 hearing here at the commission.
Okay. And, and you can bring that up later. And then the, the other thing I just wanted to call out, I mean, just from everything I'm hearing, just making sure everything's as clear as possible. So the advice from Trevor and the, and the staff in general is you'll need a CUPA because you can't park the, the flow you have. So I mean, just in terms of advice, it sounds like we're all saying to you very clearly, start to work on that. Because by the time we sit down for a next hearing, you know, if we don't want to have to consider revocation, then you know, I think you'd want to at least say, this is the CUPA we're working on in the scope. And that's just my personal observation from what I'm hearing.
Come on, really, who are you going to listen to? Your lawyer or me?
I'm not, I'm not trying to be a lawyer. I'm just trying to call out what I hear.
I understand.
Good line, though. Okay, John, are you, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
Richard, we have a, a parking tax in Malibu. Has Hakim or any of the others paid their parking tax?
We can verify that for you with our finance department. It, it's not something done through the planning department, but we can check with our city's finance.
Okay, and if we're going to continue this item for, I forgot, when, May 20th, what happens between now and then? Are we going to comply, are we going to have compliance to our codes or not?
That's the question. It is the question.
That is the question.
Yes, the purpose of the compliance was to give the applicant an opportunity to do one of two things. One thing being comply, you know, but we have suggested to them throughout this path was that they simply, when their lot fills up, instead of utilizing off-site parking and accepting more customers, they simply put up a sign that says lot full, and they block the entrance to their lot, forcing cars to pass the site by. And also, as we discussed here, we, since we have an issue with the valets' operation and the way they're queuing cars and they're staging, they essentially put it all back to the way that it was approved in 2007. So one option is for them to comply between now and May, and if they do, we will report what it is that they've done. The other option is that the applicant, as what we've pointed out, as our city attorney has mentioned, was to, they present an application to amend their conditional use permit to accommodate what is currently happening on the lot. To, that would be one way to address the non-compliance issue. So the goal would be that one of those two things would happen. If they don't happen, the commission at that point, you, you could direct staff to initiate the, the permit revocation or modification process.
So on April 15th, do I expect to see people, valets parking off-site?
Probably.
Well, I'm just wondering, they're in violation, so is somebody going to go out and say, no, no, no? Now, the reason why I'm asking that is, on September 13th, 2012, we, we filed a, a notice that they're in violation. That was eight and a half years ago. Or I mean, no, not eight and a half, seven and a half.
Well, as you can see with what's happened on Saturday and what's happened today, our code enforcement staff is taking an active role to document the site condition and what is happening. So we will be reporting to them what we observe, and if it's in violation or not. But essentially, the applicant has a choice. They can come back here on May 20th and do nothing, and the commission can take an action. Or they can show some good faith effort here, and they could do one of those two.
Yeah, but what I'm asking also is, you've got three other parties involved. And is Norm going to get cited, or the Hakims going to get cited, or is the enclave going to get cited?
We'll be looking at that.
Okay.
All right, look, I, I think the, we're, this is not going to change overnight, right? I mean, I don't care what we say here tonight. They, and I think that the advice from the staff, it said, you got till May 20th, right? If, if we go that route to say that's, you know, that gives you a chance to sort of think about what we're, we're talking about up here. It gives us a chance to document whatever we think the issues are, so that if we got to, if you, you know, if, God forbid, we have to go down a path we don't want to go down, but it won't be a surprise to anybody. But I go back to my opening statement, the conversation we had today, right? Let's find a way to make this thing work so nobody is making a mess of this thing, all right? And we need your help to do that. If you sit back and you just stonewall us, you cut out our options, right? You, you cut out the options we have to try and make this thing work for everybody. So, excuse me. And I, I, you know, I, I don't remember your name, and I, Paul, I'm getting old, and if I was to write them down, I. It's Tepper. Would you like to say something? And just, if you just fill out a speaker slip when you're done, that would be, this is, this is the gentleman I met with today when we, with Scott.
We are trying to find a solution.
Okay.
And we, and, and I, a lot of, what I hear is a lot of, is it legal, not legal? Whatever it's legal or not legal, the, 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 the objective here is to find a solution that people can park their cars off-site or onsite and, and not to block PCH. That's the objective. So, so if, if, so it's not a question of legal or not legal. If we, if we are, like Mr. Resnick said, if we close the, the parking lot and say parking is full, I think it'll create even more traffic jams on PCH. So what I was trying to say is, we are, we are, we want to help and to, to alleviate all this problem. But can somebody of the staff commission can also come up with some suggestion to help us? I mean, it's, it's just, it's, I, I don't think it's only our problem. I think it's a general problem in all Malibu.
And that's part of the problem we have. You know, we've got to treat everybody equally, right? You have to do that. And there, there are more people than you who are short on spaces, all right, looking to find solutions. And if we give you the right to do something that we don't, we make them comply legally to some other, we're running into a problem. And you're right. I mean, one of the things I would suggest, okay, is that maybe you sit down with the same folks from Soho, the folks from the Malibu Beach Inn, and sort of sit down and take a look and say, this, we, that's, you all got the same problem. Can, you, you run a good, your restaurant runs like a Swiss clock. You guys are smart, right? And the folks at the Malibu Beach Inn are smart.
I like that suggestion.
Sit down as a group and sit down and say, geez, is there, because I'll tell you, I mean, and I'm speaking for myself now, okay? If, if somebody were sitting up here today and said, here's a long-term solution, here's how we fix this thing, all right? Here's a good way to solve this. I'd be happy to live with short-term solutions till we get there, right? But without, without a direction that says, I know at the end, I got something that thinks is going to work, I'm just repeating the same problem day in and day out, and nothing's going to get any better. And, you know, and that's me. That, that, I'm not saying that the rest of the commission agree with me, or, but.
No, no, I agree. I agree. That's a good, it's a good suggestion.
So, I mean, sit down, look, everybody's got the same, sit down with these guys and see if there is a group solution you guys can come up with. All right? And I got some ideas if.
I, I get upset when everybody's, is saying it's, it's only Nobu's problem.
No, it isn't.
It's a problem of Malibu city. I lived here for 25 years. I'm a resident. I, I pay my taxes. I, I live here for 25. I'm in the same situation as, as other residents. But that's, that's what I have to live with. You know, it's like, when I go to New York or I go to Beverly Hills, or I go to Santa Monica, there's traffic, and I have to live with that traffic. If I want to go to Beverly Hills for dinner at night, try to go on, on the 10, at 5:00 o'clock, and see how long it'll take you to get to Beverly Hills. Probably two, two and a half hours. That's what I usually, you know, so it's part of life.
I understand.
And, and Malibu, traffic is part of life.
What we got to try and do is just make life a little bit easier for some of the folks in Malibu on PCH. That's all I'm trying to do.
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to find ways.
It is not going to be, I don't have a perfect solution. I've got ideas, all right?
Okay.
But, and like I said, sit down, talk to these other guys. If you've got an idea, get back to us, because we all want to try and solve this.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to get a motion.
I, first, a question on how to make a motion. Richard, do we, this is supposedly an annual review, but we haven't had one for bazillion years. Is there an annual review required every year?
Condition number 40 calls for an annual review, yes.
Okay, so I want to make the staff's recommendation, receive one-year compliance review, blah, 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 and two, continue the item until May 20th, 2019.
I have a quick question before a second, if I could. Just to clarify, in terms of the, the fact that those bins remain in that, in that location, is that something that can be required now to be changed? Is part of this, you know, just recording that we've filed this? Or is that something which just has to be worked out by May?
Yeah, I mean, it, it isn't before you in terms of taking action on a violation at this point in time. That would either be done through code enforcement or through a potential revocation or modification hearing.
Chris, that's why I asked if things were going to be enforced.
No, understood. Yeah, yeah, thank you, okay. I'll second your motion.
Oh, I, I.
Can I make a counter motion?
Substitute motion, substitute motion. From what I've heard tonight, compliance is technically impossible. If they need 200 spaces off-site, and the way we're construing and constraining what is a legal process, compliance is technically impossible. So what they need is an amendment. They need a new plan, and they need an amendment. So instead of just putting the motion through, let's decide it, I think, can we make, is there some way to structure a motion that says, start on an amendment now, rather than waiting till May?
Believe me, if you start now, you're not going to make May. Now, compliance is possible. You just don't park off-site. Now, that's not a good solution, but it's possible. The question is, will they, if, I'd be very sort of disappointed if there wasn't something coming back in May that was concrete, like an amendment.
Right.
But you can't do an amendment by May.
Well, let's just.
This is March.
All right, let's just.
Ben Resnick, for the record, the question is, why do you think an amendment solves anything? An amendment, at the core of the problem is lack of parking, physical lack of parking. We've been trying to get parking. I can file for an amendment. I don't know what I'm filing for because there is no parking. What I said before is we can accomplish the same goals that the staff's trying to accomplish, which is, which Commissioner Hill alluded to. Is the parking off-site that we're using available? Is it legal? That has to do with that property owner, not with us. If that parking is available, is legal, then we can work with staff and say, what does that owner need to do to rent to us? But for me to file an amendment, it. But for me to file an amendment, it doesn't solve the problem we've been talking about.
Well, I think what, what we're saying is, you got to talk to our city attorney, because our city attorney's opinion is
I understand.
we cannot, we don't have the codes to allow you to do that.
Okay.
And that's what the amendment's about.
I understand.
All right, uh, we've got a motion. We have a second.
Yep.
Uh
Just to be clear, that, that secondary motion died with no second.
There was no second.
Yeah, okay.
And, gentlemen, May 20th, okay? We want to help, but you got to help us help you, you know? So, let's vote. Kathleen, oh, sorry. Okay, Kathleen, roll call, please.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Chair Euring?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we got, Bonnie's going to make an announcement, and then we're going
I was coming back to the question Commissioner Maza had at the very beginning about the Caltrans meeting regarding the new crosswalk at Corral Canyon. You're correct. The date is Tuesday, March 26th, here at City Hall at 5:30. And people can speak and get questions answered by Caltrans.
Now, let me ask you this. Is the city going to be involved at all
Don't let him go, I want to talk.
approving that, that crosswalk?
Tell him to hang on.
Is Public Works going to review it, and they say it's safe? Are we going to hear it? Is public safety going to hear it? Is Public Works going to hear it?
I don't know, I don't know all the answers to that.
Okay.
Your agenda is
Motion to adjourn.
Well, I want to make a motion to adjourn in honor of Jones, Ambetti, and Dickdale.
Second.
Second.
All the favor.
Aye.
We're done.